This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, everybody, it's good to see you here. My name is Ann Valisis and we are starting this special session of the Port Orford City Council. And it is May 28th at about 4:05. So we'll begin with the roll call. Counselor Brennan?
Here.
Counselor Burns?
President.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Jim here.
Counselor Lovendall?
Here.
Counselor Rask?
Here.
And we don't have Counselor Webb here yet. We have also present with us our city administrator, Melissa Radcliffe, our financial director consultant, Ann Heath, and recorder Harrison. Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have on the agenda here an opportunity for citizen comment. Do we have any citizens online or in the audience that would like to make comments? Seeing none, I will move forward with any additions to the agenda. Do we have any? I don't think so. So then we will move on to the second reading of our TLT ordinances. And before we move on to this, I have a few items to to update you on with this. Let's see, where are we? Okay, so based on since the last time we met, we had the realization that it's going to be very difficult to move forward to implement this by July 1st because of people who are the collectors of this tax having enough time to make changes and and also our staff having capacity to do the work to get those letters out and all that jazz. So we have, we're going to be proposing a few minor amendments to both ordinances that I did run by our lawyer. They're just super minor to which are going to basically move forward with adopting this ordinance, but we're going to make it effective January 1st of 2026, which means that we give people plenty of time to know this is coming. We we move forward with our effort to, you know, start generating additional revenues and we keep on track with this process. So that's kind of where we're going with that. So for the first ordinance, which is ordinance 25, 2025-03, decreasing TLT tax rate imposed from seven to 10%. What that entails is at the end of the line there. All right. Webb is here and I hope he used the other door and he walked out. Oh, whoops. Okay. Okay, so basically all we add to the end of that is effective January 1st, 2026. Melissa, he's here.
There you go. He came in three minutes ago.
Okay, be it recognize that Counselor Webb has arrived at 4:08.
Almost early.
Um, so anyway, Brett, we're talking about a few minor changes to this TLT rate increase. The we're going to make it effective January 1st, 2026. So that's the addition. So it will be a transient shall pay a tax in the amount of 10% of the rate charged for the privilege of occupancy in a transient lodging facility in the city effective January 1, 2026. Okay? So I would entertain a motion to to pass this ordinance 2025-03 with that amendment.
I move to pass ordinance 2025-03, effective January 1st amendment.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor will take the vote. I guess I can't do it that way. Commissioner, Counselor Lovendall?
Yes.
Counselor Rask? Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Jim, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Rask?
She's saying yes.
Can you give me the thumbs up? We're not hearing you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So there we have that. Thank you so much. Okay. The next one, to accommodate that change, we have to make a few more, well, minor changes that are going to be recommended. So under, so now we're looking at ordinance 2025-04, clarifying Port Orford Municipal Code, TLT Procedures and Funding. There are three minor adjustments to make to this one. So under B, instead of saying, I don't know, under C, instead of saying four tenths of the collected tax, we just say the remaining collected tax because that gives us the opportunity to adopt this now. And then because between now and when we go up to, there's not going to be four tenths there until we adopt the the actual change in January, if that makes sense. So that is one change. So from four tenths to the remaining collected tax will be split 70/30. Does that make sense? Tim, you're looking a little bit puzzled. I want to make sure it makes sense to you.
It makes sense. I'm following perfectly.
Okay. The other thing in that same thing on the bottom is that one little item did not, that Lori recommended that did not make it in last time, which is under the same section is where it says it should be split into a 70/30 ratio in accordance with state law. And we say 70% shall be used for tourism promotion and tourism-related facilities through Tourism Promotion Agency for the City of Port Orford, right, that part. There should be a line that also says, that says 30% shall be used for city services or for tourism-related purposes. Somehow that didn't get picked up. So basically, we're saying, we're describing the 70% has to go to this visitor tourism promotion or tourism-related facilities. The other 30% can be used for city services or for tourism-related purposes. Initially, we had it very specifically going to that TLT beautification grant also was mentioned. The attorney said, don't mention that. Just say tourism promoted, tourism-related purposes, and then you have a little bit more freedom to do what you need to do.
The 30% should be used.
Shall be used for city services or for tourism-related purposes. Okay, so that's the second one. And then the last one, so those are related to that first change we made and one that it didn't quite carry over. The last one that I am proposing together, I talked about this with Tim. We went at the last TLT committee meeting, it became evident to us or to me because Tim was not there at that one, but we discussed. People were not, have not been necessarily providing receipts to get their money. So the way the process has worked is people get a check and they're supposed to later turn in their receipts, but they haven't necessarily done that. And so I propose to tighten our ship a bit and to add at the end of this where it says and will be and will F with council approval and will be dispersed after the beginning of the fiscal year, adding to that after receipts and/or invoices are provided.
Where is that at?
So that's, oh, that's on F. So that's, so after the TLT beautification grant, so at the very end of that. So grants shall be allocated by the TLT Expenditure Committee with council approval and will be dispersed after the beginning of the fiscal year. That's what it has been. But then we're going to add, I would propose we add after receipts and/or invoices are provided.
So we have to spend the money and then.
Turn in the receipt.
Reimbursement rather than, I don't know how that's going to work for people. I mean, I understand. I I had been wanting to tighten that up because we already say that you're going to owe us the money if you don't provide the receipt. I mean, you owe us, either give us a receipt or the money. We already say that, right? So.
The problem is that it's not really been.
We haven't enforced it. That's our problem. That's our deficiency. And it seems like we could, rather than change the whole system, sell ourselves to get with it.
Yeah.
You know. It seems like that would exclude some people, some participants from being able to participate in the program. I mean, if I was doing a $5,000 job and I had to come up with 2,500, I could probably do that. But then the other 25 might be a stretch, you know? Just, I'm just throwing it out there for discussion's sake, but.
I hear you. I wish Melissa was here right now to talk about it too because it's, it's kind of the, it gets to the staff capacity of going down. And what we're trying to do is actually get that committee more on board with
I think.
Going around and asking for the receipts because people were supposed to turn in receipts that didn't.
It's been, Tim, it's been like that forever and it's him. And you know, you know, you, you collect that tax, you know, so it's got to be especially hard for you, but, but I, that's like tax dollars, you know what I mean? That's tax dollars.
It is. And and one thing I have learned in all of my little TLT research is that we as individuals are very, we have, we have to make sure that we are making sure taxpayer money is not misappropriated.
Sure.
So that's like where, why it's like the need, that's sort of the impetus to like tighten the ship.
And I get, it's just, it's like, it seems like we want to help beautify things like that or whatever. And it seems like those who would be benefit most from this program might not be able to come up with that other half. That's just what I'm saying.
Yes, I agree. And as an example, I can, I can tell you last time when I applied for TLT for the little newspaper, yeah, that was all we used. That's all we had and couldn't advance the funds. I think there should be something in there that if you don't turn in your receipts, then you won't be given another grant.
Yeah, but it doesn't. But the question is, you know, we have to be audited and everything. Is that a sufficient penalty? I mean, I think that's in there already if you don't turn in your money.
Isn't it like eight, like six or eight recipients? I mean, it doesn't seem like, it's in the ordinance. If you don't pay, you don't get anymore and you owe us the money. I mean, it's.
Is there, like, you know, if a citizen doesn't pay something on time, it would be, they would pay, face potential penalty fees, correct?
Yeah, if they're late with their water bill, for example.
So if if these guys don't provide the receipts, then what about potential penalty fees tacked on to them?
We always do ask for responsible party too. We ask for an individual that's responsible, right?
These guys are saying they don't like the idea of having receipts turned in to get reimbursed because they think it would exclude the possibility for some people to participate in these TLT grants.
We didn't have.
Aren't they, but they're businesses. I mean, it's not as if it's.
They have to put out, say, the whole 5,000, but they're only on the hook for 2,500. And then then they get the receipt for having paid the 5,000 and they get their 2,500 back.
It really would affect businesses more than it would service groups because a business has to match cash, not in kind. So in other words, business would have to, we're talking 5,000, they'd have to front the whole 5,000. And I know I've heard comments from other counselors and you as well, that you'd like to see some of those smaller grants go to some of these businesses that are doing beautification. But thinking about it that way, I think Counselor Rask and Counselor Webb have a pretty good point. It just seems like if we could figure out a way to tighten it up without making it a little strict, I don't know.
Well, this is hard on accounting because we have to turn in information for them. I mean, we, that's, that's something that we.
There's a responsible, one responsible person, right? When we, there's the person who receives the grant on the application is okay, Bob's getting the money. Well, Bob, where's the receipt? It's either that or.
Well, so far we've had, like, I know somebody on the committee told me today, they started to go out and ask people, well, last year you didn't turn in the receipts and people are like, oh, well, so and so was supposed to turn in the receipts. Oh, gosh, I don't know what happened, you know, so there's.
Isn't their name on the?
Well, then they don't get it again.
They don't get it again is not quite good enough.
No, not for tax money.
Have the receipts for accounting. Otherwise, how would we have proven that we did not?
Right, right.
And it is a specific, you know, this falls onto the guys in the states, but it is pretty specific. Our auditors have to know about that information as well and they have to have those reports would be my guess because we have to prove to them that this had all been followed through on.
Correct.
That's one of the most important points, really.
I call that a slush fund, you know? If it's not done right, it's a slush fund, is what it's called.
Correct. We can't, that's what we don't have, right. It's even. It's worrisome about it. Right. And even as a, even as a single person employee, if I go to a conference and I have to do something, I don't get money ahead. I don't get a per diem that just pays me no matter what. I have to collect my receipts. I have to turn those in. I have to pay for whatever it is and then I can turn it in. So that, that, that is how even within our own system, that's our internal controls to make sure that, and if I don't turn my receipts in, I don't get the money.
But most grants are not that way. Grants, you get the money and then you spend it. It's, they're handled differently.
Not, not the ones the city deals with. We put our receipts in and then we get reimbursed. And then there's dispersal.
So, so this, you missed this part of this piece of it. So to me, the people that we're wanting to encourage to participate, they got an ugly thing or this and that, they're struggling to make it. And those are the people that may not have the money. That's what, that's the point of it is, is like, I'm sure if you came to us and said, I would need to go to this thing and I don't have any money, then I'm sure that we would figure out a way to make it happen. And, you know, just maybe we wouldn't. But we probably would, right? I just, I always, you know, I'm poor, you know? You know?
Right. So is the city. And I guess that's the hard piece is that.
Well, it's, 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 it's the other end of it. Our, we haven't policed ourselves. We haven't required the proof that we say that we were going to require. And it's been years of it. And so that's become the culture.
Right.
And and we just need to change that culture to, like, we need to, I hate to say it, but we need to make an example of some people.
Is there a way to fine the groups if they don't turn receipts in?
Yeah, they, they have to fill out an application, right?
Return the money? I mean, they just have, that would be the ultimate thing is if you don't do it, then you have to.
You know, if they, if they're not gonna, if they're gonna be.
Tim, it's already in there, right?
Right, we just don't enforce it.
Receipts, then, then the city fines them. They find their group.
Well, oftentimes.
Because they, they, if they're signing, if they're signing for money, then that, you know, then it's, the responsibility is on us to make sure that they're turning in receipts, but then the responsibility is also on the group.
Yeah.
How do you enforce it?
Fine them.
But how do you get them to pay a fine?
How do you get the money?
Yeah, but an outside business owner might, I don't know.
Just say I don't have the money.
The same way you would find anybody else for anything.
We don't have any enforcement of anything.
Yeah, but this is, I think, a little different. This would be.
Counselor Lovendall?
I just wanted to ask one thing. It's good to see you. So if someone gets approval for a grant and they pay, they, you know, spend $400 on paint this month, they charge it, they bring the receipt to you, we reimburse them right away. That's, that's the way we could get them to, people to pay. They have a little bit of lag time and instead of, so they get, because I know the grants we just did, you have to, you don't get the money until you give the receipt. And so that, and to your, to what you say, to your point, people have a time, if that's, if they don't have the money and they are able to charge parts, parts of what they're doing and part of what they're doing, and we are efficient in returning that money, we can't just say, oh, you know, we'll get to you in two months. But if we can turn over that money rapidly, then that might take care of some of your concern. Just a thought.
Another thought that I had was what if we had in a provision that says something along the lines, you know, a variance to this may be provided at the discretion of, you know, or something that way, in case somebody was in that case, they could.
Isn't a loan, it's essentially a loan, right? We're loaning you this money until you give us the receipt.
What would it take for them to go, to have to go to court over it?
As I say, they gotta pay us back if they don't have the receipt. They either gotta come back with a receipt or the cash, right?
Well, the other part about it, that's kind of a little bit worrisome is, let's say somebody asks for $1,000 to do something. Who's going to really spend $1,000? Maybe they end up spending $8, $848. There, do they give the money back? Do they show the receipts? Do they, you know? Yeah, but do they do it?
Again, that's.
Well, but then again, that's our fault for not following up on that.
Our own rules.
Well, that's why we're kind of looking at this to consider, you know, do we have the staff time to go around to go after eight people? To track them down.
Committee just hasn't taken that on as part of their.
They are this year. They're trying, they're trying that out, so.
So that's the first time.
Yeah. So they are calling the people and they are, from last year, the people that haven't turned their stuff in, they're actually targeting those people to go ask them for. They're trying to get the, they're trying to pull that out for people.
When we have these grants that we're going to give out this year, should be given out with forms.
They're working.
Pretty much forms, I think you and I talked.
They're working on it now, yeah.
And I'm requesting two pictures of the project. I think that's, that's important. And it's been a fight all the years I've been involved in it. I can tell you that. It's been.
To get the receipts.
Main Street's always been pretty good about turning in their stuff and beyond that, some have and some haven't. It just, it's tossa. And back to holding one person responsible, I remember years ago, a gentleman applied for one that was part of an organization. And then he moved on, the project never got finished. Years, 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 and it finally got finished. I'm not going to mention the project. But there was no one really to go after because that person had left that organization and moved on. There's still an organization to go after, but the front man was off to another program.
So maybe there needs to be two names of two people associated with the group. If that person left, then the second person.
Put your name on the dotted line, man. I mean, you.
The organization, huh?
It's.
The organization is responsible for it.
I agree. They are in a, yeah, but the one person that applied for it worked for the organization and no longer worked for the organization.
Whose financial responsibility, it just seems like there's, you assume some risk when you, I'll be the guy that signs it, you know, like, that's like cosigning for your kid to buy a car or something, you know, like, that's silly. But I'm just saying, there's risk that comes along with it. You know it.
We're talking the city. I mean, if, if we do it the other way and people have, are able to pay, you know, charge them, we turn it over, that eliminates the risk to the city. And I think that's what Mayor Ann is talking about. How do we eliminate the risk to the city?
Because if they have to pay for the whole thing and then come in with the receipts and get their half, half of it back, the city's off the hook. We're not liable. Otherwise, we're, we're liable.
I don't, I don't.
And what, how different is it than any other ordinance that gets broken, that we don't do anything about?
Taxpayers' money and it can fall to the auditors and the auditors can send that information to the state and the state can call you out on that money.
So the state is saying that it's a half, half and half.
This TLT thing is a serious thing of reporting to the state.
It is.
Because it's taxpayers' money. You don't mess up with taxpayers' money.
No, it's.
I mean, they're saying that the grant has to be 50/50.
She says the ultimate, this is from the lawyer. She says the ultimate risk here is that spending could be found unlawful, which could create the opportunity for application of ORS, blah, blah, blah. The statute that can make city counselors personally liable for unlawful expenditures due to harsh consequences of ORS 294.100, pushing the boundaries of spending authority is a risky endeavor. And that was, that was just related to saying when we were.
Pushing the boundaries of spending authority.
That we, that we have to be careful about how we spend the TLT money, basically.
So.
But the reality is this is going to be coming out of the 30%, not the 70%. It's a little bit different. But it still is, it's, it's taxpayer money. So that's the bottom.
But the state hasn't stated that the business or whoever has to pay half, the city is saying that. So the audit just looks at the whole thing. I assume, I don't know how the audit.
Well, if they get any of that TLT money and they misuse any of that TLT money and the city doesn't follow up on it, we're the ones that are responsible for it.
But we but we didn't allocate it improperly. In other words, according to what Ann read, it was the improper allocation. Right? So as long as those applicants met the requirements of our program.
Correct.
Then it's not on us.
Yeah, as long as they meet it. And that's the question though, is if we have a record of them not needing it and we're having a problem with it, that's, that's the question to.
I get it. No, I get it. I get it. I just know that this, that people, the reason they apply for that is because they don't have any money, you know?
But they know it can be backfilled. And I guess for me, with the auditors come in, they might, they do a lot of things at random. They will come in and say, okay, I want to see receipt for this 1020407. And so you have to go pull out 1020407. And if it was something that was, oh, we gave John Isidore's Corporation $1,000 to paint the fence and we need the receipts to do it, and we've given John Isidore that $1,000 and I don't have a receipt to show that we did this, that's a ding on the city. Because we are then, we have given that and we don't have the documentation to back it up to say this is, this is the, this is the paper trail that shows what happened. It means then we're left that we've given that money to them and then we don't have the receipt as documentation of how it was spent.
So then it's come down to the city having to babysit all these groups to turn their receipts in on time, which is not something, you know? I mean, they're, they're being operated and overrun, overseen by grown adults. Let's be responsible.
That's right. And that's the point.
How about if, how about if we tell them we'll turn them to collection if they don't?
We're still on the hook.
Yeah, but that's a pretty good threat for a lot of people.
We want to. So I mean, like this, it's, it's also that we want these projects to, it behooves us to make it work. I totally get what you're saying. I mean, it sounds like I totally get it. To me, it's, I'm doing this right now, like.
And I guess for me, if I apply for a grant because I want to go paint my, paint the fence on my business and I know that I have to turn in the receipt to get the money, then I'm going to go take my business credit card down or my business checking account and I'm going to go buy the paint at a local establishment. And then I'm going to come to City Hall and turn in that, that receipt so that then they will reimburse me right away. And so that, I mean, if.
That's the way to do it.
That's the way to do it, is to say, go buy your materials, bring me the receipt. And I, I mean, if I was really underwater, like you're talking about, I would put it on my credit card and then I would come and get the receipt and get a check to turn into.
So is this, is this something where we're encouraging them to shop at the local stores?
That was just me. If I got money from the city, I guarantee I would be buying it from City Place. That's me.
Then, you know, what's, what's the, what's the possibility of, hey, you know, working with the local businesses, break, you know, print us up a receipt of what this, these items would cost. They bring it in, we give them the money. Then they go get the supplies. Then they're not out of pocket and we're not getting screwed by not having a receipt.
But some of them. But some of them, there's all different things, like I bought that bulletin board at Ray's, so I had to buy the bulletin board. It's turned out I bought it and then got reimbursed. But if you have to do something like that, if that's what the project is, or you hire someone like Ed did, that it's.
They're still gonna, they're still gonna be given a bid for the work.
But they gotta pay the worker.
But they bring the bid in to the city and say, this is, this is the quote for the work that we're gonna have done out front. And then the city gives them the money.
But how do we know that they actually?
Completed the work.
Completed the work.
See, if they have.
Like he said, the two pictures.
Yeah, but if, but we're trying to take away the risk from the city. I mean, as Melissa said, that isn't putting somebody at, you know, it's not much different, but we get the, we get the receipt, we know the work's done and then we're done, we're not, we're not leaving any kind of little loophole or anything open.
So what about like the Fourth of July jubilee folks, right? They're not gonna be able to do that. I mean, how can, they can't shoot fireworks off.
But they pay, they pay ahead of time.
Yep, but they, they, they have come to us later or they've come to us just months ahead, that's what I'm saying, they, they've taken our money and used it in their purchase and they haven't shot the fireworks off yet. And we haven't seen, never saw any receipts either.
I have, I don't believe I have ever seen one.
They purchase it, I mean, they purchase, they have like a contract and purchase ahead of time.
We never see a receipt.
Yeah, we do.
Oh, good.
Dina, absolutely, that's a great example, because, yeah, we give them a check and then they, they send us back that, yeah, they have, Dina, Dina couldn't let that go through.
But, but we give them a check.
They turn in a check request form that says what it is. We say, okay, they don't, we don't write it to the Jubilee, we write it to Bob's Fireworks R Us.
Bob's Fireworks, which is.
And then they go turn it into Bob's Fireworks R Us.
That, that's kind of what Counsel Brennan was saying is, is that, I mean, that's similar, it sounds like it could get a bit messy, but that is what she's just suggested.
And that, and that could work.
I'm just saying for those, you know, for those who don't have the money upfront, maybe that's a workaround.
Optional, yeah.
So we don't give the check, we don't give the money to the organization or the entity, we go, we give it to, again, Bob's Fence Painting and then it goes directly to them.
So the language I had proposed was after receipts and or invoices are provided. So an invoice could be something along the lines of that.
Charge it, yeah, I mean, I could charge paint at the hardware store.
Yeah.
And then bring that, it doesn't mean I paid for it, though. I mean, I could, then I could get my paint and my.
Well, but you'd still have to provide the receipts, I mean, that's the thing, we need the receipts at the end of the day. And that's the, you know, I mean, I, I kinda hear, I hear what you're saying and I'm just kinda looking at the need to tighten our ship, like in many ways.
I've been asking for this for quite some time, I definitely believe it.
My personal leaning is towards the ship tightening, but what we could do, just because we wanna get on and we've spent a lot of time talking about this, is we could move forward with these amendments except for that last one and then we could take a separate vote on the last one and just see where it falls. Does that sound about right? Do you guys feel comfortable with that? Unless there's any further discussion, I just think we need to move on. Okay, so to remind you, the first two amendments are to change four tenths to the remaining. This is, okay, I'm gonna propose it because I have it in front of me and we didn't get it printed out for everybody, so I know this, I apologize. So I'm going to entertain a motion to amend ordinance two oh two five oh four, section three point oh eight two four oh disposition and use of transient room funds, funds as follows. Section C, changing four tenths to, four tenths of the, to the remaining. And adding a sentence at the end of that same section C that says thirty percent shall be used for city services or for tourism-related purposes.
So move.
Any further discussion? Okay, we'll call for the vote, Counsel Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Lovendal.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Him, yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, so now I would entertain a motion to amend this ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four, clarifying Port Sanford Municipal Code for T L T Procedures and Funding. Section three oh eight point two four oh, section F, to add at the end after receipts and or invoices are provided.
Can we throw some, okay, then I'll move to accept it.
Yeah.
So we can discuss it, right?
Yeah.
Second, we've already discussed it.
We got a first and a second?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, can we throw something in there that, and let, you know, is there like two words we can add to the end? That like gives somebody a workaround, I don't know. I mean, what words might they be?
They can turn in an invoice or they can turn in a receipt, so they can do what Deanna said or they can.
I, I.
But an invoice still has to be backed up with a receipt.
Not paid, yeah.
It's still, yes.
Because you could say, I'm gonna pay X person two thousand dollars for labor and then that could be volunteer labor.
Right.
Can I say something? Can I say something?
Yes, Counsel.
I've raised my hand a few times, but I don't know if you guys can see.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's hard to see, thank you for piping up.
No problem. So whenever, like last time that I got the documents to do the T L T grant, yeah, it says you need to turn in your receipts or you won't get it again. I think there needs to be, if you could just redo the sheet to put in big, bold letters, all of, all of the threats and all of the instructions and it just seems to be an offhand comment in there, something that's just put in there, but like, you know, not enforced, like so many things. And if there's a cover sheet that says, if you fail to provide receipts, you will never be allowed to apply for T L T funds again. T L, you know, receipts must be received by so and so, just like really drive it home, I think people would get it. It's just one line in there and it's not very threatening.
Twenty-eight percent interest, fifteen dollars a day, I mean, you could really.
Yeah. But put it, you know, make it really, really plain to everyone that we're very serious, because it just doesn't come off that way. And I think people know that, you know, we just don't follow up on things and so they just don't worry about it.
Comment, but what we do right now, we have a, we have a first and a second on, or we have a, a motion and a second on the table. And so what we're really discussing is that particular motion, Brett has waved, raised the idea of can we put in some sort of little workaround such as, how about unless, unless a waiver is, or unless a waiver is granted to this or unless a.
Must other arrangements are made or?
Well, if it, it could be something after receipts and or invoices are provided, period. Here's the key to this, though, I don't want to be in charge of giving someone money and then my signature is on the line that says, sure, Joe Blow can have this money and then if he heads for the hills, I'm the one that's stuck holding the bag and I'm disinclined to do that. So maybe it's the mayor's discretion or the somebody else's discretion because I don't want to.
Committee's discretion, I mean, I don't know.
Could be, yeah, I mean, that's where it should be.
The problem, here's the thing, the discretion falls on the person asking for the money, if they can do it or not. And if over and over and over, it's become the culture that we don't enforce that thing, then, but my point is, is that those who may not be able to afford it, they, they will be less likely to apply, right?
Yeah.
But the evidence is, is that it is people who can't afford it, right? So if you can't, if you're not being paid back, right, maybe they can't afford to pay back, or maybe they.
They don't get paid, it's not, they're not paying back, they just have to provide invoices.
But they, so they had to provide that, it's basically is what paying it back, that's, you either pay back this piece of paper that's a receipt or you pay back these papers that are dollars.
You couldn't get that, you can't get the dollars from people very easily, I think is what the, is what the whole thing.
But they're signing that they will provide us, so you either bring this receipt or you bring these dollars back to us by this date or you're subject to a fine and I just, I don't know, I hate to exclude people from a program that we want to see.
Okay, so we, we've, we have it, we have a first and a second. If there's no other amendment to be made, if we don't, if you don't, if there's no other proposed amendment, I will just call for the question. Is there any further discussion? We've heard the two arguments. We'll just see how it goes here and go, and, and we will take into account, we'll, we will proceed accordingly afterwards. Okay, I will call for the vote. Counselor Rask.
No.
Counselor Brennan.
Yes.
Counselor Lovendal.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, no.
Counselor Pogwizd.
Him, yes.
Okay.
So you got that, Joseph?
Okay, so we're gonna make that amendment and for those who feel uncomfortable with that amendment, I would say, why don't we see how it goes for a year? And if it's a problem or if we don't.
Already, I'm ready to move on.
We could always bring it back.
I'm not married to it, that was just one of the seventy things I gotta say to talk about today, you know?
Okay.
I would like to think if somebody came to us and really had a good program.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm sure we probably.
That's what.
I think we could.
I was suggesting, but we all, clearly we couldn't throw it together right now, so.
But I gotta believe it's, it's.
And it. And if at like three AM tomorrow night, you come up with the idea, or whatever, anybody does, we can revisit it, so.
Usually two or three.
Okay, well, so we had hoped to have time to have a discussion and here we are.
You discussed.
As, as usual, we have lots of good opinions about things. So ahead of the Budget Committee meeting, which is gonna be starting in fifteen minutes, which is one of the most serious and important things that we have to do as counselors, we had wanted to have some time to maybe discuss ahead of Budget Committee meeting, some of the big bones of this budget and what we're going into. So I'm gonna turn it over to maybe Melissa to just give us a little bit of an update on that. Are you ready for that or do you?
Sure.
Yeah, and then we will, yeah.
Basically, we've been working to look at a budget and those of, this really is to let everyone who really has not been on the Finance Committee to let the rest of the counselors know kind of what the, the thoughts have been with this. And so, Joseph, can you pull up my PowerPoint, please? Well, hopefully Perry can see it.
Just give me a second.
Counselor.
No problem.
At least some of the, basically some of the things that we have talked about in the Finance Committee. So you know, we have looked at selling land, credit card fees, furlough days, cut back on other things. What has happened with, you know, I've done everything to the point of even turning back the water service that was here and, in here and like I bought Brita filters, like I've been, I have been like. Squeezing every turnip, absolutely. And so one of the things that with the Finance Committee where we started was to say, what were the goals that we went over and what were our priorities and what had happened, which I have copies of that we'll hand out during the committee, okay? We have a shortfall that we've been talking about the whole time. The big picture is that we have, this is just what we're going to be doing, so I won't make you sit through that. These were some of the changes that the Finance Committee suggested. So the part-time traffic officer would then go to seasonal, so that cut back part of that. We've gone from twelve municipal court days, one per month, down to seven because in the wintertime, they aren't writing as many tickets, they don't have to do that, it's not a big deal to carry over an extra month. So we've cut back on judges' fees. You voted in to increase the T L T percentage. One of the things that has been brought forth by the Finance Committee is that we are short a hundred thousand dollars even with the transfers from the general fund to the, to public safety. And so one idea is that in order to raise a hundred thousand dollars for public safety is to add a twelve dollar per month, per account fee onto the utility bill. Another one is that we will be increasing all the utility rates by three percent and that, the three percent raise is only to keep up with inflation. Okay, so those are some of the big ideas that this budget was built upon. We were able to balance the budget, get everything in the black at the bottom, but we still do not have reserves. We do not have street reserves, we don't have, we don't have, we don't have reserves. So that's how we've limped along in the last few years, but we are riding on a razor's edge. At the end of this, if you look at the water fund, it's the, the, the carryover, the ending fund balance of that is three thousand dollars. One pump costs more than three thousand dollars to do that and we don't have water reserves because those have been earmarked, or the S D C fees have been earmarked for grants. So we are on a razor's edge. I would feel better if we could try to build those contingencies and build those reserves so that when the market does this and when all these things happen, we don't have to bottom out every time. We have no shock absorbers. And so we need to be thinking longer term and not year to year to year to year trying to just rob Peter to play Paul in a lot of these things and we really need to be thoughtful about how do we get more of a cushion in our funds in order to help us secure what we're doing. Okay, so the, what I've done is put up, Ann Heath made the graphs and then Joseph made the colors different because I couldn't see the other one. So basically, the, I can't see, the revenues are in green and the expenses are in red. So you can see that they've sort of mirrored, but we, our expenses are higher in the general fund than what we've been in the green and that's a seven-year trend, that's seven years worth of data. This is public safety, revenues in green, upper left corner, revenues in green, which is the far left, you can see, it's not very good. The general fund contribution is the middle bar in each of them and the expenses are in the red on the right-hand side of each of those years. Same data in bar graphs, line graphs, excuse me, in line graphs on the right-hand side, so right top. So the blue is the general fund that has been used to, to do that. This is how police, this is how it works, right? Remember, the general fund is the only thing that can move money from that into the other ones. So we need to have our general fund be healthy in order to fund the other lines, right? So in that, what Ann Heath did is she went back and said, okay, in the last five years, if these other funds, water, sewer, streets, public, everybody was paying for, into the general fund like they could have slash should have been doing, where would we be? And that's where we started our budget on, okay, if this had been where it should have been, then we'll start here and roll forward. Okay, on the bottom of this, as again, public safety, revenues are on the left bar and the red expenses are on the right bar. Things are more expensive, they are not buying cars, they're not buying all these things, right? This is, this is, they're being very frugal and all that. Streets, well, now we have everyone here, so it's kind of the same sorts of things.
Well, I, I think the point was not to go through this presentation, but to just, we had hoped to have some more time and we spent it on the other thing, so.
Right, so, okay, we can just go back to the start and we'll learn it all together. Perfect. Okay. But we are in better places than a lot of other cities, let's just be really clear on that, okay? We have hope, we will figure this out, we can do this. It's just a matter of, we need to just be really thoughtful about what we're spending, what we're doing and the way you get these funds is either to increase revenues or you decrease expenses. Those are the two ways you do things with budgets.
Did we talk to the assessor and ask them?
I did call the assessor, yep, sure did, and they are, they're supposed to by law, quote unquote, do assessments every eight years, but they're a little behind and they're sixteen to twenty years behind and I did say we would really prefer to get caught up.
Yeah, that's a lot of money, I mean, especially given the increase in property values over the past several years.
But it's market value.
It's not tied to that.
It's not the market value.
I know that my taxes have gone up on three hundred percent or three hundred percent at least.
Right, and so those have been collected, those have already been collected, but those aren't the ones, and we don't have control over the property tax, so.
But if they're not assessed.
But, but that's.
We're, we're dependent upon their work.
Correct, yes, we are, yes.
And, and they haven't been here in twenty years.
That's a big part of the problem, actually. Another part of the problem, which you guys know I'm going to keep bringing up, is attorney fees over the last few years. It's killed us, absolutely killed us.
Yep. And there are going to be a lot more going forward because of, we now have, we, we don't have the, set the deal we had before.
I understand that, but I'm here to tell you, that is eating up a lot of our General Fund.
Because there's no, there's no way to bring money in for that.
And I think the biggest part of the story, which we haven't discussed, which I know you will, is that we used to have a lot of traffic violation revenue, like, to the, to the, to the tune of $200,000 a year. $300,000, that's gone away. And then when that went away, the General Fund just started paying over to the law enforcement, and that's been going on for years, that's part of the rob Peter to pay Paul. We've been kind of paying for that without necessarily- And, and if these things were easy- Rectifying the situation. And if, and if these things were easy, every city's budget and every state's budget and every budget would be squared up, and if the answers were easy, it would be figured out. But these are the things and why we started, and we'll go over them again with the, the Council Goals, and to look at the priorities that we had set, the things that we're doing. The problem is that they're conflicting, because we have all the things that are important to us on the priorities. But we have to think about, what are the community values? And where, what do we need for here? And there are, there are hard decisions to be made with this. And that's, and that's the tough part.
Courts, the courts thing, you know, did we talk, did you guys talk about that at all? Like, you show up to court and your fine goes from $400 to $200, just for showing up? And that's the judge's discretion, I get that. Is our judge aware of? Okay, all right.
And what, what I have, what I have seen, and I can only speak to what I have seen since I've been in there and been more active in the court clerk and more active in the things like that, if a person gets a, I'm going to use round numbers, if a person gets a $200 ticket, and they don't show up, and they fail to appear, and they don't do all that stuff, it automatically doubles. So it goes from a $200 fine to a $400 fine, right off the top.
If they show up, it's $100.
Well, I don't, that's up to the judge, and we can't control that.
No, but I'm saying, that's what happens, right? Yeah, so-
I haven't seen that very, I haven't seen a ton of that. But where we, where we have lost a lot of revenue in that is that we haven't been collecting it, like, turning it into capital C collections. And you can only go back so far. So we have a drawer in there full of suspended license people and whatever else, you know, that, that we haven't collected on. And I think part of it had been, like, you know, we don't want to put people into collections and we don't want to, they're already folks we're, we're losing, we have lost a lot of funds that way, because there's stuff in there for 20 years, and you don't go back 20 years on a ticket. You just, at some level, you write it off and you have to just let it go. I think because of the timing, what we need to do is conclude this meeting. I'm going to adjourn the special session at 4:48, 4:58. And I would like to just take a five-minute recess and then come back after the Budget Committee meeting, just so people can take a restroom break. Sounds good.
Mike will be muted during the recess.
We can have a book club, I like- Are you starting to do, are we ready to go, Joseph?
Recording and mics are hot.
Okay, excellent. We are calling this first meeting of the City of Port Orford's Budget Committee to order. It's Thursday, May 22nd, and it's 5:04. We are going to begin with a roll call of our committee members. Let's see if I think I know everybody's name. Lori Proudey. What's her last name?
Walker.
Miki Walker. Rick Lindy. Sarah Lovendall.
Here.
Laura Mason.
Here.
Deanna Brennan.
Here.
Gary Burns.
Resident.
Tim Pogwizd.
I'm here.
Jim Proudey.
Here.
Counselor Webb has stepped out. And so, there we, we also have with us, oh yes, Counselor Rask, thank you, are you still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Excellent. And then we also have with us present Public Works Director Isador, Chief Hobart, Recorder Harrison, and City Administrator Radcliffe. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands on nation under God.
Excellent. Before we move forward, we have on the agenda an opportunity for citizen comments or concerns. Do we have anybody in the audience that would like to make comments? I will recognize her. Anybody online? No. Okay, then. I am going to then just open this up with a few introductory comments. I just want to welcome you all to, to our Budget Committee. And just to underscore that the work that we're going to do here all together is some of the most important work that, that has to get done in our city. We are, we must steward the taxpayer monies that we are entrusted to steward, and we also have to provide the services to our city that are so crucial to making our, making Port Orford a great place to live. So anyway, before I turn this over to, let's see, the next thing that we're going to do, I just want to make a few comments on how we got to where we are. Just a brief bit of background. At last year's Budget Committee meeting, we were up against some serious shortfalls already, and for reasons that Administrator Radcliffe is going to help us to explain, because we're in similar straits this year too. And at that time, people had some really good ideas for revenue generation. And so we pulled all those together. Our previous mayor appointed a Finance Committee. And when I became mayor in January of this year, I re-upped the Finance Committee, made up of council members and staff. And we really did a lot of research to look at ways, at some of those ideas that had been generated and others. We actually met three times and considered 27 different ideas for cost-cutting and revenue generation. And we recommended the best ones to council. And we directed staff to work on about seven of them, some of which are, have been incorporated into this budget, and some of which are works in progress. And that's just to say that we have been starting to think about our budget in a way that is more prospective and more forward-looking than has been done in the past. I also want to, at this time, introduce you all and welcome Anne to us. I forgot to introduce you earlier, Anne, who is our new financial consultant. And she's been working with us since about February to help us get our financial house in order. And she's going to be part of, of helping us to understand that today. So, with that, I also wanted to, before, the next thing we have to do is to elect a Chair of this committee. But before we do that, I would just love to take a quick moment to go around and do introductions, because I know some of you who are citizen members of this council have different experiences that you bring to this committee. And if you could just briefly say your name and, you know, what you're, what you bring to this committee, that would be super helpful. So, since we're all going to be working together. Would you begin, Lori?
I'm Lori Proudey.
Great. Miki?
I'm Miki Walker, and I've been in Port Orford since 2016. So I'm relatively, as our standards go. As far as background regarding budgets, I was a global banker in the government administration and I've been a part of that for 17 years. And, and I'm still working now for IceSpace, a company that I've been with for the last 25 years.
Great. Great. Excellent, thank you. Rick, and if you would, just, we have to ask people to speak into the microphones, it would be helpful.
My name is, is Rick Lindy, and I've been a resident since 2015. I have been basically self-employed all my life. I've had corporations that were revenue of over $20 million. I'm president of the Langley's Lions Club, and, and here to help.
Great, thank you. Sarah?
I'm Sarah Lovendall, I'm a counselor. I've been here since, I own property here since 2010. And I've worked in government, and I created budgets, worked in the Finance Department, and overseen large budgets. And now I'm Treasurer of the Commemorative Audubon Society. You know, that's my current financial experience.
Okay. We'll jump over to, I'm, I'm the mayor, and I have been, before I got involved in municipal government, city government and stuff, I didn't know anything about all municipal budgets, but I have been learning quite a lot over the past few years. I've served on the Budget Committee for, I think, the past four years. Mr. Proudey?
I'm Jim Proudey, and I'm really new. I've been here since Halloween of '21. So, three and a half years. I was originally CPA, and then I went to work in business, in the ag equipment, high caterpillar and international harvester. Then I went into the airlines, where I became eventually a CFO of Westair, which was a United Express carrier in the 80s. And filed public 10Ks, we were a public company. And I've also been a city councilman in the city of Oregon, California, which is about 15,000 people.
Great.
So, and had a staff of about 100, 110, and retired people on the payroll of 79. So I know some of the city requirements that we have to do. And I'm currently Treasurer of CBHA, our Heritage Society, or Gisborne Co. Heritage.
Cool, thank you.
They appointed me this year.
Great, okay, cool. Counselor Pogwizd?
Tim Pogwizd, my wife and I moved here in 2005 and bought Port Orford RV Village from Alan Marine Alfonso. About 2008 or '09, I decided to jump onto the City Council, and I have been re-elected since, serving four years as mayor, two terms ago.
Gary Burns, City Council, and I've run my own wood carving business since 1978.
Deanna Brennan, moved here and bought property in 2021, and decided to run for City Council and see how to serve my community.
I'm Laura Mason, and I, I've lived here full-time since the beginning of 2018, but my family has been associated here, and I've been coming here since the early 1970s. So I've seen a lot of transitions in Port Orford since, during those years. I am a practicing attorney out of Michigan, not in Oregon. And I've also been involved in managing and been president of some nonprofits back in the Detroit, Michigan area.
Cool. Counselor Rask?
I, my name is Perry Rask, and I've been a city councilor for two and a half years now. And by day, I am a professional fiduciary, trying to retire. Lived in Port Orford since 2004 and have had a lot of nonprofit- Lived in Port Orford since 2004 and have had a lot of nonprofit board experience as well as managing money for people for 25 years.
Okay, maybe we'll just go to staff briefly. Melissa?
My name is Melissa Radcliffe, and I am the City Administrator here for the city of Port Orford. I spent most of my time in schools. And so school finance and city finance are very similar. It's just, instead of pencils and books, it's pumps and pipes and all sorts of things. So have been working within and managing budgets for many years as a principal there. My husband was born and raised here, and we spend a lot of time here. And so we moved, we purchased property here in 2015 and moved down full-time in 2021. So glad to be here. Thank you for, for volunteering to come in and be part of our committee. We definitely appreciate your vast knowledge. So thank you.
John Isador?
John Isador, born and raised in North Bend, Oregon. Spent 40 years, about 34 of that on the U.S. Coast Guard Base in Kodiak, Alaska. Got here in 2022, see what I can do to help the city's infrastructure.
John is our Public Works Director. Chief Hobart?
I'm in my 36th year of law enforcement, all of it's been in the Upland and Grove Valleys, until I came here in 2014. So been here ever since, doing what we do.
Thank you. Recorder Harrison?
Oh, all right.
Don't run.
Sorry. Or Radcliffe for running.
Yes, don't run.
Now it's, I don't want workman's comp. I don't want you to trip.
Very fair point. And as many of you will probably soon find out, it's, I don't think the city can necessarily afford a workman's comp on that. I'm Joseph Harrison. My family moved here about 10 years ago. Then I left for college and came back during the COVID crisis. I'm our city recorder, planning technician, IT AV, and administrative assistant. So I wear a lot of hats, but I have an interesting haircut, so.
Thank you.
He's a math major.
Yes, I was a math.
So he helps with budgets.
And Counselor Webb, we're just doing the.
Yeah, introductions, it sounds like. Brett Webb, I grew up in Southern California, moved to the area in 1988. And have run my family and small business. Sir, just re-elected to my fifth term on Pork Commission, and this is my second term here at the city, having taken a break for four years. And I have nothing special to offer, other than some experience. Other than that, so that's it.
Great, thank you. Okay, our, and Anne, you're going to be coming up. So maybe when you come up, I'll ask you to introduce yourself at that point. At this time, we have to elect a Budget Committee Chair from this body. So I would entertain a nomination, a motion to.
I'm the officer.
Elect someone to be the Chair. And Melissa's going to be the.
You're going to be the Budget Officer? Oh, you're looking for a Chair?
Yeah, Chair for the Budget Committee.
I move to elect Mayor Anne Melissa as Chair.
Second.
Is that okay?
I don't know.
Is that okay? Okay, that sounds okay. I would accept that if that happens. So any further discussion? I will call for the vote. Laura Mason?
I'm in favor.
Yeah, just say yes.
Oh, yes.
Deanna Brennan?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Pogwizd?
Jim, yes.
Mr. Proudey?
Yes.
Lori Proudey?
Yes.
Miki Walker?
Yes.
Rick Lindy?
Yes.
Carol, Thara Lovendall?
Yes.
Brett Webb?
Webb, yes.
Gary Rask?
Yes.
Okay, so I am the Budget Committee Chair, which means, great. I get to, I get to continue on with running the meeting. And at this point, after all of that, again, thanking you all for your time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, for a budget message, to our Budget Officer, who is our Administrator, Melissa Radcliffe.
Again, thank you all for being here. This is just a quick overview of the budget we'll look at. The city of Port Orford budget documents being presented for your consideration and comments is for the fiscal year of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. As, you don't have a copy of this, so you just have to listen. As required by Oregon budget law, the budget is balanced between resources and expenditures. The proposed budget is separated into 12 funds. General Fund, Parks, Public Safety, Water Enterprise, Water Capital Reserves, Sewer Enterprise, Sewer Capital Reserves, Streets, Streets Capital Reserves, Equipment Replacement, Water SDC, which stands for System Development Charge, and the Sewer SDC. We will be reviewing each fund in the order shown above. Well, I'll, we have a PowerPoint. In the order shown in your packet. And approving each fund before moving on to the next fund, except for the General Fund. The General Fund will be reviewed first, but we will not approve it until all the other funds have been approved. The General Fund is approved last, since many of the other funds are dependent upon General Fund money. If any changes are made to them, we will need to make final adjustments in the General Fund at the end of this process. Does this make sense? Thank you. So the budget overview. The fiscal year 2023 proposed budget is $9,526,514 in total. That's a 31% increase from last year's adopted budget of $6,576,515. I will say that is due to many grants that we have been doing in order to keep our berg afloat. We've experienced a shortfall in the last few years and have used our reserve funds to balance this budget. Reasons for the shortfall include increased overtime costs, attorney costs, engineering needed for grant proposals, unforeseen forensic audits, emergency water leaks.
We had something else earlier today. Did I hit it? Reduction in.
Reduction in citation revenue and other unbudgeted expenses. As you are aware, prices have increased across the board. A combination of decreased expenditures and increased revenues have been used by the Finance Committee to bring you this balanced budget. A five-year budget reallocation, employee layoffs, employee furlough days, shifting personnel from one fund to another, increased fees, and increased oversight by our finance contractor have been proposed. In this proposal, some were used and others were not. Ultimately, the Budget Committee will have to decide how to create a budget to formally approve. We hope these measures will allow the city to rebuild its contingency funds so we can fix the infrastructure for our customers and have money available to respond to the city's needs. In the five-year look ahead, we see that changes will need to be made, so we remain stable. We have difficult decisions to make, but together, we can put our fiscal house in order. Respectfully submitted, Melissa Radcliffe, City Administrator and Budget Officer.
Okay, thank you for sharing that overview, Melissa. So there's a lot of, before we get on to the, the main act, we have one other item that we have to do here ahead of time, which is we have to have a public hearing on state revenue sharing before we get to the presentation of the budget. So I'm just going to move forward with that. Oregon budget law requires the Budget Committee and the City Council to hold a hearing on the probable use of state revenue sharing funds. Those are some of the types of funds that we get in relation to, like alcohol, PLP, marijuana, yeah, things like that. So anyway, yeah. So tonight will be the first public hearing concerning the budget, and the Budget Committee shall conduct a public hearing on the proposed use of state revenue sharing funds, and if the city of Port Orford should vote to receive them. So at this time, pursuant to ORS 221.770, I will open the public hearing in order to give the citizens of Port Orford the opportunity to comment on the use of state revenue sharing funds in the city of Port Orford's budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. If there are any members of the public wishing to comment on the proposed use of state revenue sharing for this fiscal year 2025 to 2026, we ask them to testify now. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody online that wishes to testify? Having heard none, I will ask, has staff received any written testimony on this to share? Okay.
The answer was no.
Okay, hearing and seeing no other citizens wishing to testify, I'm going to close this, the testimony portion of this hearing. And if there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at this time. And we will move on to the proposed budget. And is that going to be with Anne, making the presentation for the next?
I will.
You start. Okay.
Well, if you want to say something first, just kind of the overall, Ms. Heath, you can do that.
Okay, why don't I ask you to introduce yourself to Anne? And then we'll, because we kind of, since you're sitting, the audience are kind of missed you in the go-around.
Good evening. My name is Anne Heath. I am a contractor and I work, I come to you on behalf of Uncoa Financial in Oregon CPAs. So I, I work through them to serve Port Orford. I was raised in a CPA family. My dad was a CPA. I probably have nine siblings and half of them are CPAs. So we all learned at a very early age on his lap with the little pull-down adding machine. And so I, my early career was in accounting and, and some business management, financial management of businesses. I then moved into financial management of park and recreation in Sisters, Oregon. So I was the Finance Director in Sisters. And then I was promoted to the Executive Director of the Park District in Sisters. When my husband was promoted over to the Valley, I went to work for the city of Coburg as their Finance Director and then was promoted to their City Administrator. So, and I served there for 10 years. When I retired, I, from that position, I, my intent was to work for small cities to try to solve some of the struggles they have, because there's never enough money and never enough staff. And there's always uphill climb for small cities. And so that's kind of where I wanted to spend my time. So that's why I'm here. It has been a pleasure to work with the staff. I'm really impressed. When I came here, only a couple months after I started to work for you, I had a very bad message to share. I mean, it was not a pleasant message to share on my behalf, and it was hard for you to hear. Since I've been here, I'm just impressed how, how much the staff and the mayor and your Finance Committee have dug in. They, they haven't, they have just turned every stone over. They've worked so hard to try to, to find a way to solve the financial struggles that you're having. And I, I just can't commend them enough, because a lot of people can sit and whine a lot and think that it's, can't be changed. And I see cities that do that. The city's not one of them. The city's working hard to overcome your challenges, and so I commend you on that. And I'm very happy to be here. I was happy to be part of this budget process to help, help you to see a way to look out five years. Even if it's not pretty, you're looking out. You see it before it's happening. You're given a chance to turn it around, and I really do believe that you are going to be able to do that. So thank you for having me here.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Anne. Okay, with that, Melissa, I'll turn it over to you for the presentation. And maybe you could, as part of that, just help everybody to understand kind of like what we're going to end up doing tonight, just so.
Okay. Okay, so.
One second.
Okay.
Sorry.
This is the AV IT part of his job, because he gets to do all those things. One of the things to start with is, you should have a document that says, "City of Port Orford, Council Goals for Fiscal Year 2026." And this, I just want to start with this, because this was the part that as a, as a council, we talked about, what are our goals? Not we, what are their goals? To, the big buckets that we want to make sure that as a functioning city, as a functioning government, that we are doing. And so the big, kind of overall umbrellas they found were to be fiscally responsible, to have fiscally responsible operations, to focus on utilities and infrastructure, and also, also livability and health. And so as we go through this, I know the Finance Committee, we looked at these and thought about the priorities that were there to say, how do we make sure that what we are doing is fiscally responsible, is focusing on what our little town needs, and also to make sure that it's healthy and livable for our citizenry, right? That was our, that was our charge and that was our, our goal. Those are our goals. And so the other three pages that have the blue and the green across the top are those specific things with specific parts that we're doing. So if we look at the top, and it's a little hard to see, I apologize, but fiscally responsible operations on the back of that page, it's, you know, we have the Finance Committee. We are trying to, so under City Administration, this was a big piece of what we were doing and some of the ideas that we had had. Managing grants, this is a top priority for us. We are looking at, you know, when we can come out of water curtailment, how do we do that? Creating a plan for that. And these are, you know, our, our look-aheads. Emergency management, to provoke individual citizen preparedness, establish incident command. All of our, all of our groups and our committees, we are saying, what are our most important things to make sure that we can, can do this? So please feel free to look this over. I don't know in our time that we're going to get all the way through our whole budget and all the discussions and all of that. But just so, especially our, our citizen representatives on our board here understand kind of where we are going and where we are and to be transparent about what we're trying to do. Okay, so that's just to, to highlight that. Okay, these are what we have up. Oh, thank you. Oh, look at that.
You guys who are sitting on this side, Melissa has a presentation over there.
Up there, so if you want to follow there, those.
You can also come out and sit, if you need to just come over and sit in the audience.
You can, whatever you're most comfortable doing. So these are just the highlights of the, the council goals, basically, for this. So tonight, our, our charge is, we've just done the budget message. I would like to go over some of our city successes. So I know that it's, it's sometimes hard to get lost in the, in the problems and get lost in the issues, where I would like to highlight some of the things that we have. And I appreciate Ms. Heath talking about, you know, working with us. We've been thrilled to work with her. We trust her. She gives us good counsel. It's, it's been really, really good, and we've had some good successes. And so I wanted to share those, too. Also, as she mentioned, we do have future challenges that we need to continue to tackle. And then we will look over a budget overview and kind of a data review. So we're trying to be data-driven, so that we know what we're up against and to collect some of that. And then this ultimate job of this body is, again, to start with the General Fund, review it, and then go fund by fund and make sure that what we have proposed makes sense. And then adopt that individual fund and then move on to the next one. So again, this, we have this meeting scheduled today. And then if we need to, we can move into next Thursday, which is the 29th. So just being aware of, of timeline. We don't have to squish all of it in today, because we have two hours. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. From five, we have one and a half hours left, yes. So that's kind of the, the overview of what we, this committee will be doing. Okay, so as I started with the budget message, we'll have 12 funds. We'll start with the General Fund. I only mentioned that again. So you see the numbers. That's the 9.5 million over the 6.5 million that we had last year. And then again, looking at increasing revenues and decreasing expenditures. We need to, again, grow our reserves to make sure that we are, we're stable as we move to the future. One of the key components is that Ms. Heath did a five-year reallocation to rectify the dwindling General Fund. And she also did a five-year projection based on that, based on those numbers. So the idea behind that was, we have had a history here of having inter-fund loans, a lot of inter-fund loans and back and forth and doing some of those things. And so what has also happened is that money was flowing in all sorts of directions with, with things. And so what she did was to go back five years and say, if those funds would have been allocated to the General Fund, if, if all of those funds would have been paying to the General Fund as they could have been, should have been, then what would the General Fund be at now? And so she did that. That's the reallocation to look back. And so she did that. That's the reallocation to look back and say, if that had happened, where would we be? And then taking this budget, then we can look forward and say, if we run our budget and approve this one this year, then what does it look like in the coming years? So that we aren't flying blind. We're really trying to get a handle on where did we come from, where are we now? What are the decisions we need to make now to help our next generations moving forward? Okay, so we're trying to, to help us go kind of both ways with that. Okay, city successes. So we do have the $1.5 million block grant for, federal block grant for the community building complex, which is now in progress. That has been a labor of love for many years. And so now we, we're moving through on that. So we're very excited about that. Another win was that now we own 60% of our watershed, free and clear, based on some, a, a grant and a low interest loan. And then Mayor went out and got another grant to pay off the low interest loan. So that's now free and clear. So we thank her for her efforts on that for sure. Something else that we haven't had is that we've, we were behind on our audits. And so we had not finished our 22 audit when I started last March. And so we got that one finished. We're now through with our 23 audit and we're now very nearly done with our 24 audit. So we've, we're catching up so that we have good numbers on which to build and make decisions. So that's feeling much better. Again, as the mayor mentioned, the finance committee has been working on this since January. The finance committee includes our department heads of Chief Hobart and Public Works Superintendent John Isador. Also our accountant, Deana Lang, who is the part-time accountant in our office. And then the mayor, Councilor Pogwist and Councilor Burns and myself. And Anne Heath, when she has been here, which has been most of the time for those. So that, that's been that. Another thing in this last year, we, neither of our two unions had ratified contracts. And now we do, we got those negotiations buttoned up. So we know what the numbers are for that. And also our planning commission secured a planning grant and now we're nearly ready to change those codes. And so there's been, there's been really good work done on many fronts around this city in the last year. So we're, we're pleased for that. Okay, future challenges. We need to increase our contingency and our reserve funds. At this point, we have been riding on a knife's edge for a very long time. And so in order to balance past budgets, contingencies and reserves have been drained, which means we don't have very good shock absorbers moving forward to deal with the hills and valleys of, of budgets and the markets and trying to run a city. Grants will continue to be our way forward. So we are getting better at collecting data and getting better at thinking about and applying for and managing grants. So we're failing forward many of the times, learning, all that good learning for us. Streets, parks and our police department. We need to bolster those to become more self-sufficient in the future. Streets has a small, you know, from the state monies that come into that, but not very much. Parks does not have a revenue fund that is dedicated to that. There's not money that particularly drops into there. And our police department, they have gone out for a levy. It's a five-year levy. It was passed last year. So we're in year, starting year two of that, of that levy to, to make sure that we can pay for our law enforcement. Another way that we can, you know, a future challenge is to come out of that water curtailment. Because if we could have more accounts put on our water system, that leaves more people to help pay for the water and to pay for the things that happen. So having been on that for a number of years is not great for our bottom line. We would like to move forward with that. And then we also still, again, the grants, we need significant money to upgrade our aging and break prone water system. So, but we're working on many fronts on that, from the freshwater side all the way through and grants for our wastewater side and everything as well. So we're fighting on many fronts. Okay, so what we brought forward as the finance committee or the finance committee brought forward were some changes or some ideas, which then this current budget was built upon. One of the things was that our part-time traffic officer is now, he's been part-time, but now in this situation, he would be more seasonal. So here during mostly the spring and summer months, when, when our tourists are very active here. Also, we have a municipal court judge that travels through that get one day a month, comes and deals with all of our citations and violations and things like that. And so we have to pay him as a consultant to come here and drive through. So what we've done, based again on volume of tickets and things, is to cut down not, and not have him be here every single month, particularly through the winter when there's very few, not as much need for that. So instead of having 12 months of that, we'll have seven and strategically place them throughout the year. Also, the public, we've, there, there's been a proposal for the public safety fee. A public safety fee of $12 per month, per utility account is how we've budgeted this. It creates $100,000 that would be specific to public safety on that. And also this has a proposed increase of utility rates by 3%, which basically keeps up with the inflation that we've had for the last year. So that's sort of the, the big ideas and the changes that have been made so far by the finance committee that has been brought forward and this budget has been made on. Data to support the decisions that, that we were looking at. So this was information from the general fund. The green, the green line shows revenues and the red line is expenses. And so where we have those gaps is where we fall into trouble. This was a seven-year trend, a seven-year look back and the data is there in the upper right-hand corner. And this is just for visual representations. I go through these few things. Public safety, public safety on the upper left-hand side is a bar graph. The green, which I know it's hard to see up there, the, the leftmost bar is revenues. The blue bar in the middle are general fund contributions. So those, that's a transfer that's been done into public safety. And then the red line on each of those are the expenses. Same thing in the upper, another way to look at it is the line graph on the upper right-hand side. And then the bottom graphs are the same data without the general fund contributions. So you can see where we've, where we've been on that. The next one are with streets. So we talked also about, again, the green is the revenues and red are expenses. And then the blue are the transfers in from the general fund to keep that moving. On the right-hand side are the ones without the transfers in to show you kind of where, where the trends have, have been with that. And then currently for contingency and ending fund balance, so in talking about those shock absorbers and, and talking about where we were with that, we currently have a 9.2 percent, we, we currently have contingency and ending fund balance of 9.2% of our overall budget, which equates to $67,000. To get, to get through, so our, our funds drop in, just so you know, our funds from the state drop into our accounts in November. That's when we get our first check for the fiscal year to get our money from the state, which means we have to have enough carryover to pay the bills for July, August, September, October and November. Jason. So in order to, in order to have enough funds in our coffers to pay for those months, until our November monies drop in, we would need approximately $160,000 to $200,000 to do that. Okay, this is where we would go and do a fund by fund look at the proposed budget. Well, first of all, are there any, I mean, I just put a whole pile of things on you, but are there any questions or overall sort of big picture questions that you have?
I have a couple. I mean, you just showed that you're not left to carry in this Jason fund. So I'm assuming you've already have contingency plans to get that extra money, right? You say you got 167 and you need 150. So you're 80 ran short. You have 67 and you need 100. So.
Correct. So then what happens?
You do have the money.
It's in, it's in the other, it's in the other funds and that's what we have to pull from in order to do that, which is where those inter-fund loans come in for that. So we're trying to have those funds available to be able to pay those bills and pay that, but we have to pull it out of. Yeah, please, please. Microphone.
In the past years, what's been happening in Port Orford is that you spend out your money by June 30th. You have very little left over. And then you have these months to get by until you get funded again. And basically what you've been doing is writing checks with nothing to back the checks up. So it's been a undocumented inter-fund loan. So you've been spending the money of the other departments. And then, and then when the, the tax dollars come in, it makes the general fund whole again. There's no loan on the books. There's nothing official. It's just you overdraw your general account. And then when the tax dollars come in, it makes it whole again. So bad practice to get into. The best case scenario is you have enough money at the end of the year to get you to when you get your tax dollars. That, that's what you want.
Money is in a bank account. It's just dedicated to a different fund.
Exactly.
And Anne, how many years, when you went back on our books, how many years have we been doing that? Has it been about three since?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think so. I think it was about three years, yeah.
One more, just general question, because the number was really staggering. Last year's budget was 6 million something and the new one is nine?
Well, that has to do with some very large grants, I think mostly.
Your county grant as a general fund type of transaction in the general budget?
It's, it's the city as a whole. That's the full city budget.
So your county grant building funds like sewer improvements and all that in that budget. Okay, thank you.
So one of the pieces of paper I hope you have there in front of you, just to talk about this allocation, the reallocation. And I made it big so everyone could see it, but it's this one that has the yellow, blue and green on it across. That is, that is a document that Anne Heath put together to show, so I'm going to have you come up in case they have questions, please, to show how she relocated. That's that sort of adjustment that she did, the five-year look back. So if there's questions, I would ask you to.
I'll, I'll just explain. So there is a total amount of the business of the city. That is on your far left, the 1.5 million dollars. That's your materials and services budget and your payroll, personal services, capital outlay. So your total is 6.2 million, which is in that total column in the middle. So because general fund administers all the business of the city, it needs to be reimbursed for its work. So all of your administration is in that. So how to do that fairly is to figure out what percentage of business of the total 6.2 million does each fund represent? And then that percentage tells us how much money that fund needs to pay back the general fund annually for their share of the administration of the city. This hasn't been done. I did this scenario and took it back five years. Had you been doing this, the general fund wouldn't be in trouble. Because it's never been fairly reimbursed for the administration of the city. It's been absorbing 100%. So much of the work of the city staff and city hall is on behalf of the utilities. I would say a larger percentage is on behalf of the utilities and the other funds. It's not for the general fund. So, so this is a way of allocating fairly the administration of the city. This will help your general fund in the long run because it's now going to be fairly reimbursed for that time.
Okay. In layman's terms, and these other funds have a revenue chain where they can up their fees or their levies and, and then take, to pay themselves so that they're self-sufficient. You're saying they haven't been self-sufficient. So you draw from the general fund to support fire department. And you don't have a fire department, the sewer or the water. But you're, you have to generate enough revenue to make them self-sufficient or they'll never pay back the general fund, right?
Exactly. So the, the hope is, is each fund is standing on its own two feet and be able to pay back their share of the administration. It's part of operations. So if you find your water and your sewer not being able to make these payments back, then you're not making enough money on your water and sewer. That's just the bottom line, is that your water and sewer has to be self-sufficient. And this is a bill it, they need to pay. It's not like, well, you, we'll just write that off. You've been doing that and your general fund's paying the price.
Just for a little bit clarification, our water and sewer funds, all of those funds are funded by the utility fees that residents pay.
The fees I pay as being the city.
Yep, those are paid for that. As was mentioned, the police department has a levy that pays for some, but not all of its costs. Roads and parks don't have anything. The, the parks had a TLT fund that was going into that, that we've just shifted to general funds because we've learned that the general fund needs to be the, is the fund from which other funds can go more more legally, yeah, yeah, right. More effectively. That's the way, would be a good way for, so anyway, those are, just a little bit more back.
Because there, yeah. Because in funding, there's not, there's not another bank account for the sewer, right? When I send in my checks, they go to the general fund. You don't put them in a different.
No, each fund has its own cash account. It's all in the same thing. It's not a separate bank account, but it's a separate cash account. So.
So your sewer bill will have on it a sewer fund that's like a couple of different, a reserve fund and a kind of operations fund. And that goes directly into those funds.
Thank you.
Okay, so if there are any questions about that, or are you clear as mud?
We're good.
Excuse me?
Yes, Councilor Rast.
Mayor, I have to step back from the meeting for approximately a half hour.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, Perry. And just come on in when you come back. We'll, we'll have it all solved by the time you get back.
Yeah, it'll be, we're good.
All good. Thanks.
So one of the things, so in your packet, we also have, would you like, do you think it would be better to go over this one with all the whole amount? Or do you feel we should just go through the?
I think it would be good to start with the whole budget amount.
Okay, so this one now is another big piece of paper and it has a green box kind of near the bottom.
Is it separate vice? We don't have that one.
Is it the last page of this one?
It's the, yeah, it's.
It is. It's, it is in your packet. It's the last page of your, of your packet. Correct. It's very tiny. So we printed them bigger because do you want this one?
Yes, please.
All right, so Anne, would you like to talk through this one or?
This is just, it's, it's overall total budget of the city. And it has, it's a comparison to last year. It shows your, so this is generally what we would turn into, to your county. And so it shows the beginning balance of each fund. Up in the revenue section, there are some funds that are starting this year in a negative. Then it lists all your revenues. And, and then you have your expenses and then your, your ending fund balances. So the unappropriated is the ending fund balance at the bottom of the expense line. That's what you carry forward. So your carry-forwards are pretty small. Some of them are, and keep in mind that some of those have contingencies. So when it comes to sewer, there's a $200,000 contingency. That means that that is part of the carry-forward, but it's put into contingency to make sure that the money is available should something happen unexpectedly during the year. That money would never be spent without a council's approval. But you don't have to go back to the Budget Committee to spend it. It, it's a count, it's a council approval. Normally, normally contingencies are placed for things like utilities so that if you have a big break or something like that during the year, then that would, that would be available to use. When it's placed in the unappropriated ending fund balance, it's, you cannot tap it. It's unavailable. It's, what you've said is, we're not, we're not going to spend that. So, so that's how this is set up. As Melissa said, then your total budget this year is 9.5 million dollars overall for the full city.
Did you pull the police officer out of Parks' budget?
We did. I'd like to explain why.
Makes sense.
The problem, the problem when you, in a couple of different places in the city budget in your past, you had different employees spread out across the board on the budget. It makes it really hard for anybody to see what the total cost of any one program is. And so, especially the council, the Budget Committee, even the staff can't, well, what does the police department cost? Or what does administration cost? What does your city administrator cost? In the past years, you wouldn't have been able to see that as a Budget Committee member because there broke out all over the budget. This year, we've moved all employee into one place and all of your police expenses are in one place.
And I would just like to add that that was a, kind of a recommendation. It was recommended by our auditors that, that the budget be made into, that we could understand it better so we could make good decisions. So that's part of, I think, what you've tried to do, which we appreciate. How did we end up with a negative fund in our water fund this year? Is that just, I'm just kind of curious about that one, just as an example.
The beginning fund balance?
Yeah.
Basically, what I did is go back and look at how much money you have, how much, how much money you're going to spend by the end of the year and, and come up with a beginning fund balance. It's a very tricky and hard thing. I don't think you're going to end up with a negative fund balance because your Public Works Director is managing his budget pretty well. So I think you're going to be in the positive, but I have to do a sta, a starting point. And that was two months ago, three months ago, that I was working on those. Today, I'm looking at it and your budgets are being managed very well. So I would imagine all your beginning balances are going to be somewhat better than what they appear here. But I have no way of knowing that because we're not to the year-end yet. So it's, it's kind of a tricky thing that you have to do to try to set those beginning fund balances.
Okay, thank you. And just another, just question that probably most other people who have budgeting experience know. So that when we do our budget, we take the stab to make it right. And then when all of the numbers come in there at the very end, ultimately is when we audit and get everything, all those things shifted. Thank you. Okay. So should we move forward with the budget, the fund by fund? Yes. So, here is my, my, my former educator's going to come out in me right now. So we have on your budget packet, your big thick budget packet, on the top is the information that has the page numbers on it. But it's going to be easier probably if we take the time to have you write little stickies on the side of it so that when you go to do it, especially with these first handful. Web's hogging all of them there, but, yeah, so you'll need 12 little stickies. But it, as we go to each fund, it might help to write it down that way. When you're perusing it and looking at it, it's easier to, to do that. Again, this, that's just my sort of organization on it. Feel free to take a couple of minutes to do that, particularly with the first few as we get through this, because we have an hour. So, general fund. General fund's on page two. Yep. Anyone else need stickies?
What do you want us to put down?
You don't have to.
Oh, no, you're just a label to tell us where to open the page.
Yeah, just make it easier.
Just so you see, that's just a little easier. Parks is on page 11, you know, like, so if you have to put general fund on page two, Parks on page 11, it'll just help us to find it when it's.
So what can I write on the first one? Or general fund? We already made it through the general fund. No, I was just, it would be easier to.
So I would put general fund.
Well, we already did the general fund.
Yeah, put it on page.
Public safety's on page 15. You never know with you. Enterprise is 18.
It's nice that they're numbered.
Water Capital, 23. That's Water Reserve. Yeah, and it does get tricky because it's Water Enterprise, Water Capital Reserve, and Water SDC, and sewer has the same three things. So it's all a little particular. Perry's cat.
I'm gonna message her and let her know.
The cat is saying, sewer enterprise now. Are we close enough, or are you still? Yeah. I think we're probably close enough just, because we'll go through the beginning ones and we can add more as we go. I may need your help because we're just going through here, but, okay. So, so the first fund on page two is Fund 10, which is the general fund. And this budget is set up, if you're not used to looking at budget situations, we've highlighted in yellow the, the proposed budget for fiscal year '26. Just so you know, the fiscal year is always named of the second year in it. So we are actually looking at fiscal year '26. And so we have at the top the actual amounts that were audited in '22, '23. And then in '23, '24, because we haven't totally finished that audit, those are the projected, because again, we were behind multiple years on our audits. The adopted budget for last year is there under the orange in this one. And then we're focusing on the '25, '26 there in the middle. But then this where Ms. Heath went forward and, so if, it's kind of like a hypothesis. If then, if we do this budget in the yellow, then moving forward, the roll-up will be these numbers. Just so you know, for budgeting purposes, we have budgeted growth in revenues at 3% and budgeted growth in expenses at 4% because we live in the time we live in. So we, to, to make sure that we're, we're looking forward in the most reasonable way, those were the calculations that we use to move forward. Because those are what is basically happening across the board. The expenses, the costs are higher than the revenues. Correct. One example, as we've all had living here, the electric company, Kuzkuri Electric, they increased their rates 7.5%. So this is only projecting 4% for revenues, or excuse me, 3% for revenues and 4% for expenditures, except in electricity. And we did roll up a lot of the electricity costs for this next year by the 7.5. So where we had a good, where we had a good idea on those things, we did add them. But again, it's a budget, so it's, you know, our best schwami guess here. So on page two and in each of these pages, the revenues are at the top. And so you see the, the prior year fund balance of where Ms. Heath feels that we'll end up at that point. Hopefully, it's better than that because I have been quite draconian with the reins on spending in this city. And then as you go down, you can see what our revenue, what our expected revenues are. It's very interesting that our local marijuana tax, state cigarette tax, our liquor tax, a lot of those things that the state would call sin taxes are actually declining. So that is a good thing for society. However, it is not necessarily great for the city's bottom line. But, so those, those just are told to us by the state based on our population and sales across the state. Melissa, could you just say something about the zeros, or Anne? Just kind of the zeros, what they mean, why we have zeros in some places? Yeah, so on line eight, for example, the council recently changed where the transient lodging tax falls into our budget, into our coffers. It used to be by ordinance in parks, so all the transient lodging tax. So those are taxes that are collected by proprietors of RV parks, motels, hotels, short-term rentals, all of that. They pay to the state a transient lodging tax. We, as a city, get to take a portion of that for administrating that collection. And then we get to use that, those transient lodging tax dollars for business promotion, advertisement. In this city, we give out some grants that are particularly for business beautification and things like that to help with tourism and advertising. In the past, that line, transient lodging tax, was actually in the Parks' budget. But because our council recently has voted to have it be moved from the Parks' budget into the general fund, it has zeros for '22, '23, '24 and last year. And then this is the amount of money that we expect to be collected that we can use that used to be in parks. So it's now going to move forward in the general fund, but the zeros mean that it wasn't in this fund before that. So when we get to Parks, it's going to have transient lodging tax for '22, '23, '24 with numbers. And then moving forward, it'll be zeros.
And that's required by state law.
Correct, you have, we have to give a multi-year view and that's a requirement. And then the ones at the bottom are related to reallocation, these zeros. Yes, oh, and then these below, so line 20, 21, and 22, in the old budget, there was money moved from the general fund to the Parks' fund. And so, well, the other way.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. This is where those lines, this is where those sort of loans were going back and forth. And there were transfers all throughout and it was back and forth. And so what we've tried to do is make it more clean and more simple to say, it's, it's kind of doing the same thing, it's just it makes it more simple that the general fund is the place where money can move to other funds, is how it ought to be. So moving forward, that's what we're doing.
You're just telling us that, that these were not revenue funds. So you pulled them out of the general fund, right? I mean, the charges to the parks, charge, those aren't a revenue fund. They're not revenue, right?
Well, they were, we pulled it from those funds to the general fund, basically.
No, you have zero down there now.
Now, yes, that's moving forward, right? So we're no longer doing that.
So where did that money come from then? Did you move it over to the fund?
We're going to leave it in that fund. So what used to be a charge to Parks, or used to be a charge.
But you're calling it a charge, not a revenue.
They were inter-fund transfers.
Okay, so that, so it's not a revenue source. It's just an inter-fund transfer.
Inter-fund transfer.
Thank you.
Yep, yes. Okay, so that's the revenue portion, the monies we've brought in. The next section on Section 4 is now the administrative personnel services, basically, for the administration here in, in City Hall. So now it's all in one spot where you can actually see what people cost, what are the benefits, what are those? And I will say that we have a particularly, we looked today and it was a particularly high load burden of benefits for the salary. So our employees get PERS, they have vacation days, they have, you know, medical, dental, vision, all of that. And so those costs, if someone makes $10 on their wages, it's 50% of that, then you have to add in addition to pay for them, which would be like $15. So it's, it's a, it's a high, it's a high load burden with that. And that has been what has been with the years of the collective bargaining with the unions. So can you, like, if you just look at line six in that, for example, it looks like there's quite a huge jump in PERS, like, from what has been in that category before. Is that because we're now putting it all into one place?
Collected all the salaries to one place.
Got it, okay, thank you for helping understand that.
Yes.
All the salaries for the administration, right?
Yeah, and to recognize that although PERS has gone up and insurances have gone up, so it is, it is more. But these do look particularly bad, or, you know, big. Because in years past, all of the PERS money. Because in years past, all of the PERS money wasn't just in the general fund, some of it was in streets for the public works people, and some of it was in streets for the administration, and some of it was in water for the public works people, and some of it was in sewer for the public works people. It was acrossed.
It was, yeah.
Yeah.
The administration salaries were broken up over the entire city.
Right.
But is that for current employees only, or does it include the retired employees?
This is for the current employees only.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, sir.
In the past, during budget session, it's been helpful for us, talking about what you're talking about. You have a list, we get a sheet of all the employees' job classifications and what their salary is, what their PERS cost is, it's all broken down. So people understand that perhaps what they're looking at isn't just a salary only.
Right.
What you're trying to explain, but we've had it in a sheet in the budget.
Okay, and I think we have that sheet, but it doesn't, but at this point, it still has people's names on it, and so we can't do that. So we could probably go.
Well, I think we've had it to where it shows next year, and the next year, and the next year, too, so that we can really get a grip on that.
We don't, I don't think we did that. We didn't look forward on that one.
Well, I think you're talking about two different things. You're talking about salary scale, and then you're talking about the actual spreadsheet for budgeting purposes that shows the salaries.
Right. And like I said, we've just had that in the past, and that helps a person understand what is spent on PERS, what's spent on healthcare, and what's spent on salary.
And we can definitely bring that, I don't know about right this instant.
No, no, no.
Bring it, because we do have to come back to the general fund before we.
Right, it's just a useful tool for people to be thinking about as they're working through these processes.
That makes sense. Let me make a note on that.
It would also, along those lines, be useful to understand, and I don't know if this is part of what you're saying, Tim, but that some of those expenses kind of start to escalate quite a lot, right, PERS and?
And that's the sheet Brett was speaking of. We have the steps, like if a person, we can see that a person's at step three and they get to step six.
Yeah.
So you can kind of visualize how we get where we end up.
And what I will say is that in, in this city, again, we have been really watching everything that we've been able to do as far as things that we're buying. So we aren't getting new police cars, we aren't buying new trucks for public works, we aren't doing all of those things, because even up until this point, we have not had the monies to be doing that. And we've realized that, and so we've locked down a lot of the spending and things, which is why we still have, hopefully, we'll have a better ending fund than, balance than we had originally budgeted. And so employees are expensive. Employees are compounding in that you hire someone and then they continue to move, which, which we need to be competitive, too. And that's the hard piece. And that's, again, where it's a bit of a catch-22, because you want good people with experience and who are professionals and do what they need to do. But then it's hard, particularly in this area, to draw those sorts of folks to come and do that and be competitive if they could go, you know, a few miles east or whatever and make a lot more money on it. So that's, that's also part of this, is that it's, you know, we try to do comps, you know, comparisons around to make sure that we are in line with other municipalities around us to do this, so we're not wildly out of sync either direction.
No, we're not. Our staff is awesome, and they have stayed with us, and we can't pay what they pay further north, you know, Kuzh Bay and some of the bigger cities. We just.
We can't, we can't.
Nobody came here for the money.
No, nobody came here for the money. And we have a staff that's absolutely excellent, and, you know, they realize that.
I concur, yeah.
Doesn't make it perfect.
No, it doesn't make it perfect. And thank you for saying that, because I do, we, we're basically a staff of 14, you know, there's 15 of us, but two of them are part-time. And there's a lot of work that gets done here for that. So I appreciate you saying that, because that's.
Appreciate you guys.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
So anyway, I, not to get off on that too much, but you have any other questions in the, in the general fund as far as administration? Because then we could look to page five, which is with court. We've moved a lot of the court, because that is part of police. That's why it was more, it had all been in just the administration, whereas they are serving the police department. So that was the part of the reallocation to say, you know, that, who is being served by that, which fund is being served by that. And that's why the zeros there are acrossed on the right-hand side in the middle. And again, that is where, let me look. That's where you can see on line 14, the judge contract. That is nearly, well, you know, nearly in half because of the cutting back on the days of that. So again, I've, we've, the finance committee went through with tweezers to figure out how we can cut.
What is the deal on the state assess, what does state assessment line 21 mean? That's, looks like a significant drop.
Yeah, you have to, for all of your citations, you have to pay a percentage to the state.
Okay. So is that, so is that just because we are having fewer citations? That's part of the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fewer citation revenue, okay.
Yep.
And if you see that at the top, too, that's actually probably another really important thing to point out, is there, well, it's not that huge of a reduction. Well, the actual was 122,000. I think if you go back earlier, we had more, right?
Right, so, so one of the things that has, that has impacted our public safety is it used to be, this town had two northbound lanes on 101 and two southbound lanes. ODOT came in and they did what they call a road diet. So now we have that middle turn lane. That is to reduce speed, that is to increase safety. Again, that has worked. We had a lot more speeders, we had a lot more things, and so our officers wrote many more tickets, and there was higher revenue within our city because of that. And so our revenues from that have dropped drastically. And so, again, it's almost like in schools, counting referrals. Does that mean that there's, kids are getting better and they're just not getting in trouble? Does that mean that we don't have any speeders? Or, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to quantitate a negative or extract that from, from, you know, the punishments or whatever. So in that, that is a reason why we haven't had the volume of citations go through. We haven't had the volume for those, again, state assessments or even county assessments on the next page, on page six. So for every ticket that's written, $50 automatically goes directly to the state to deal with all of that, because if the licensed person is suspended or something like that, they have to do their paperwork there. So every ticket that's written, $50 automatically goes to the state. Also, every ticket that's written has the assessments from Curry County. So every citation that's written, $16 goes to the county. So that's what those state assessments are and the county assessments. So if there are fewer citations, then there will be fewer assessments. Good question. Okay, next, underneath the general fund is 30, which is emergency management. Again, these have been where you could see the administrator and the police chief and everyone that would work on those and all that information in the past would have been put here at the general fund, whereas now we've put them on the administrative piece, like for the administration manager, and then the police chief would be all in public safety. So all of the salaries and PERS and benefits and things, the public safety fund pays for all of that for public safety. They are kind of their own standalone department, whereas all the rest of us, anyone that works in City Hall and public works, are all in the administration in the general fund. So that's why you didn't see police officers in the front part of this. It's because they actually, by law, are their own standalone situation. Again, so the next part on seven, our emergency management, you know, spending some on any flyers or printing that they would have done, or any mailings that they would do, minor equipment, things like that. It's a very small component of the fund. On page eight is planning. Our planner is Crystal Shoji. She's been with us for many, many years and our, she has been teaching Joseph Harrison our planning tech, so he also was doing that and learning from her. But again, it used to be in here, and now it's been moved up to the administration piece. And then materials and services, again, an interesting thing, too, like the DLCD grant, that money was given in '23, '24, that grant was given. And then we haven't got that same grant moving forward, so that's why it says zero. But we have to be able to show it. That's that past look back that Ms. Heath was talking about, that we need to show in our past. So you don't want always, that's why you might see zeros over there on the left side. Moving on to page nine, so this is non-departmental. So these are things that are not specific to that particular task, but is basically all the things that happen and all the support that's given to all the funds and all the entities from City Hall, basically, from what, from what we do. So I know that Counselor Pogwiz talked very much about legal services. Legal services have skyrocketed based upon a lot more litigation that has been brought towards the city. And also, we used to have a city attorney who would come here. She charged $1,200 a month to be at all the meetings and to be here and do all of that. That is no longer the case, and so we have had to contract out. And so we actually have two separate lawyers, both with the governmental law group. And so we have one lawyer who works with labor, and then another one who works kind of with general land use or contracts and things like that. And so with the level of litigious situations, we run things past our lawyer and our contracts and our things like that, because oftentimes, I mean, that's just smart business, because we need to be careful on that. Yes, sir?
Can I bring up one, one other point?
Yes.
Anne, you may have this number, because this doesn't go back that far, but auditing and accounting from '21, '22, do you happen to have that number?
No.
Okay. Anyway, our auditing and accounting, which I'm sure Melissa was going to point out, has jumped up significantly because we had a complete staff turnover. And we, we fell behind because of that. I won't go into the reasons. But anyway, it's cost us dearly to play catch-up and to try to figure out what happened.
Which was why one of the city successes was, we've actually caught up on our audits, because the 2022, '23 was a time when we, we had, a situation triggered a forensic audit, so things weren't collected the way they were supposed to be. So it was a forensic audit that needed to be done, which brought more scrutiny and cost a lot more. And so now we've tried to cross-tease. Just to let folks know what he's, to what he's referring, I'm the sixth city administrator to sit in that seat in three years. So there's been a lot of turnover in that. And so really digging in and trying to figure these things out and doing that, we just didn't have someone who was here on that longer term to really be here to do it. And so I think that's part of what you're getting.
Good to describe it.
I think that's where you're getting, that's what you're leaning toward.
That's why it's such a huge success that we are caught up, and we're going to have real numbers instead of flying blind.
We lived horrible on paper, but as Anne was kind enough to mention, we, we really are working super, super hard to rectify all these problems we've had since right after COVID.
We're talking about line five, right, auditing in county?
Yes.
Which is 60 grand for this year, but it's not a catch-up, because you have this, you're putting, you're putting the same amount forward.
Yeah, why is, yeah, the, good question, Jim.
But we're hoping we don't, we, we're hoping we get past these audits and we get back down. We were paying $10,000 for an audit before we got in trouble, and then it went to $25,000 plus. I don't even know, I don't, I don't even know if I want to know what the forensic audit caused.
Does that include Anne's?
More than double.
When you're not budgeting for it to go down.
Yeah, and, and part of that is, is Anne also, for part of accounting and doing that, because she is a contracted person. And so that would be a piece to make sure we have money for that moving forward. And when you, when you don't keep up on those things, and audits are big and hairy and nasty and whatever, you sort of lose, they sort of lose faith in you, I will say. And so we've had to work really hard to kind of get our feet back to, to, even with the auditors, to try and, and do that. And so those are, those are expensive. So hopefully, it's not going to be that much, you know, and as we move forward.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying, but if you haven't budgeted for it to go down, so yours.
No, because I think that was just one of those lines that was just grown naturally by 4%. So if the staff didn't.
You may use outside services rather than hire someone permanent to do some of those things.
You can't. The state, the state of Oregon requires that you have a.
Audit costs 60 grand nowadays?
There are people working at the legislature to try to give some reprieve to small cities on that, on that front, but so far, it hasn't been very successful. Some push to maybe say only need to be audited every other year, so, but at this time, and the reason it is, the, part of the reason it's got so expensive is because the requirements to go into the audits, like the PERS, is probably 26 pages in your financial statements that nobody understands, but the state requires they're there. And so the auditor has to go through that work to prepare those. And those are the kind of, it's state mandates that have been put upon auditors auditing small cities that are ridiculous and cost the small cities far more than it needs to.
So where, so where is our, is that our cost for paying you, Anne, which is such a good investment? Is that?
Well, I don't, I not really know where you guys budgeted that.
I think, I think that is part of where we.
Okay.
I think that is part of where we did that, because it is sort of non-departmental. Your work helps every fund, every, everyone, and.
So that is under auditing and accounting, we think.
Must be. So once a month, I come, once a month, or in, I review the books, I review all the payroll, I review all the bank statements, I review all the bank reconciliations, I do spot checks on checks being written. So basically, I audit the books once a month and then sign off. It's good for you, because the auditors love that.
Well, it's required now. I mean, the auditors are ones that, that have required that, because a lot of the things have to do with internal controls. So we have to turn in, what's our procurement? What's our internal controls? When a payment comes in, where do you put it? How do you do it? Who signs off on it? Who looks at it again? Who signs off on whatever? I mean, there's a lot of things that have to happen to be doubly sure that we are doing the right thing, and it makes sense to have someone come and help us out and look at that piece, because I will be the first one to admit that I am not a CPA. I am not, this, this is my, this is the part that makes me the most nervous, I have to say, about all this, because it's just very, there's a lot here, and it's very cumbersome. But I'm learning, I'm a lot better than I was last year. And we have someone reliable that I can call and say, I don't understand, or help me, or what, and also, it helps the council feel, because the council's role is the fiscal responsibility. That is their number-one job. And so if we can't produce good records for them and good reports for them, so that they can make educated decisions about these things, then we're in trouble. So having those.
And Anne, write financial documents for us for our council meetings, and we actually, we're not able to get those for.
A period.
A period of time, which is way longer than I'm here to discuss at this moment.
So anyway, yeah, it's, it was, yeah, it's a wise, it's a wise investment.
Yes. So looking, looking down as we go, again, this is just the general running of things.
So 911 dispatch went to a different fund?
Nine, most of 911 dispatch went to another fund, because this little component of it, if someone, we still use 911 dispatch if there's a massive water leak over the weekend or in the middle of the night or something like that. People will call dispatch to dispatch public works. And so we did not put all dispatch services under police, because we do as the water, you know, we do as a city use that somewhat, but not. water, you know, we do as a city use that somewhat, but not, not totally. So most of it is under for police, but we did keep a small component of it here.
That's fair.
Where?
But here it's, here it's zeroed out now.
Oh, all the way across.
After, from this part.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's because we, because, sorry, I misspoke. Because we are moving.
Didn't they change the way that they build it? We changed the way we paid for it?
It used to be, and I think where this gets confusing is it used to be they would charge us per phone call. Now they don't charge us per phone call. It's more of a flat fee. And historically, what they have done is is call for water leaks and things. We will still have people who do that because that's what we've done historically, but we've actually purchased an on-call phone for Public Works that we will then advertise out here shortly to let people know, you know, if you have a water leak, this is who you call. But for years and years and years and years, that's why it was here is because we did have it used by our Public Works as well. So that's another transition we're trying to make to save some money on that.
Well, and the majority of dispatch is police. And so when it's in, when it's in the general fund, it makes it very hard for you to see the total costs of your police department.
So if I called 911 for an ambulance, who pays for that 911 call? The ambulance company?
Ultimately, you do.
Right.
Right, yes. I will also call out the Port Orford Girl Fire District. As Mr. Prowdy said, we don't have our own fire. We contract out with the fire department. So although they're next door, we have an agreement with them and a contract with them, you know, for rents and their electricity and everything else. And then we contract with them to provide fire protection for our citizens. So that's that.
Bargaining. We did a good job bargaining this year. Thank you, whoever did that. Was that Mayor Cox? Who?
Actually, our former finance director.
That's right.
David Johnson. Thank you. I blanked out there for a second. Yeah, David Johnson was one, because he was working with that and doing the contracts when I came in. And that was one of the first things that had done is there was back and forth on that. So that's, that's always a, you know, question on that. So.
Definitely.
Yep.
What's our plans for City Hall? Line item 17 or in City Hall?
Yeah, those are, we have things that we have to do here. Number one is the ADA compliance. So we have things like our handicap parking is not, is not correct and adequate. Our doors out here, we don't have doors to enter. So there's things that we have to do. Also, the front and the fascia boards and those sort of things. I got mushrooms growing in there. We need to, the restroom, we need to do some things for restroom. No, there's more and there's more further back in in other things. It's not just that.
So you're going to be able to address fluorescent lighting inside the, especially your office area?
I don't know. We're, I mean, these are the things that we, you know, that we haven't been doing for a long time.
Well, no, but you can't pay fluorescent tube longer than state board.
We had, we had someone who donated some, just so you know.
Well, you didn't have to pick them.
Well, it's in the process. But they are, they are looking at those. And I think I had an email the other day about, people were talking about putting that off for schools and then a possibility of municipalities. So I don't know where that has landed. But yes, we also have the fluorescent light retrofit that we need to do to buy those things. So yes, there are things that have to be done here that we haven't done.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Can we go back to this, to our rural, our contract with our fire department, just briefly? So it increases significantly through just every year except this. Is this like, did we make a special concession?
Yeah, I think, I think this is what we did putting forward again was we increased our expenses by 4% a year, just to show, just to kind of get a show of like, if inflation continues sort of doing what it had been doing, what would those costs be? Those are just a projection to say, where could we be that way when we look forward on those? So those aren't set in stone to say.
But when I look back, it suggests that's inadequate.
Yeah, that's true.
But that was, I think that was a contract negotiation.
It was before that we negotiated a new contract.
It's what negotiated every five years or something, I think.
That I don't know for sure. But that's, you know, that's kind of a good question because it might need to be readjusted down the road at some point.
Well, especially if inflation rates are super high, we may have to go back to say, wait a second, this isn't working.
So again, this was a snapshot. We did this in what, March?
Yeah. And just keep in mind that the yellow column is the budget. These other four years are just projected years to give you an idea of what could be in the next four years. It helps you to look out and see problems out there and you can start working on them tomorrow. Don't wait till three years from now to go, oh, we got a problem. So that's why I did that for you. So you guys could look out and go, okay, we got a problem now. We got some years before, you know, and that, that's the purpose of that.
That's something.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Because in years past, we just show up here and do one year at a time and then you don't have that.
Well, if you look back, actual was 53 in 2022, 23, and went to 73 for the 24, 25. So that's when we had that union or not union, excuse me, the contract change.
Right.
Okay.
Do we know that we can count on that?
No.
Contracts, the contracts. Does the contract call for more next year, next year, next year? Or because maybe we made a contract that considered our financial situation?
Like a five-year, I don't believe it's that long. I believe the contract, strangely, I believe the contract, we just do small amendments each time. And so it was actually the contract from 21 or two that was agreed upon. And then they just do amendments each year to it. But we all come to the table and do that.
But I put it on the list, Brett, and we'll just look into that and get.
Yeah.
Yeah. So these are, again, we're trying to kind of take a broad look and you get to take this with you when you leave here, right? Because we only have 20 minutes left to to look and kind of digest it and come back with some, come back with some questions. So we'll continue on, if we have no more questions, on page nine. Then we'll head on to 10. And then this is where the public work salaries have been reflected, as well as PERS retirement and things. And you'll notice that the zeros to the left, again, they were, these salaries were spread all over. So part of Public Works was in streets. A percentage of Public Works was in, you know, water. A part of it was in wastewater. And so now at least we can see where we are.
Now the street money coming from the state is going into the general fund?
No, street money has to go into the streets fund, but that does, but there's not very much.
It's like six or eight grand a month.
It's not, it's not very much to do, to do that. And so that's the issue. One of the things that we have done in streets is to try to look and that's a place where we tried to get grants to help with our worst potholes and our worst things.
What I'm saying is, is that, so we took those employee wages out of, out of streets, right? So the entire six or 8,000 coming from the state goes into that fund? Or where does it go?
No. So if you look down to the next portion, the transfer in, each, so each Public Works Fund will make a transfer into the Public Works for their share of the Public Works salaries. So that, say, the exact same amount, that's because that amount will be transferred back to the general fund. The general fund will pay the salaries, but the Public Works accounts will pay the general fund back to the dollar.
And just so you know, those, those percentages of how long each person works is, was based on this year's weekly sheets that say, I worked an hour on streets, I worked two hours in the wastewater, I worked three hours in the sewer plant, I worked whatever, whatever they were doing, they wrote it down. And then we went back and did an analysis to say, what percentage of their time was spent in each of these things based on real data that they did this last year? And so that's where the percentage breakdown.
Hugely different than what was before.
They had, they did have to do that based on workman's comp. So that is something, that's data that has been collected. But that's the data that we use to make these decisions about what percentage of them are, should be charged to streets, what percentage should be charged to water, what percentage should be charged to sewer, etc.
For example, a porta potty would be something that had been in the past, in years past, be charged to the streets, even though there's no porta potty in the middle of the street. It was just, it was shuffling money around. That's, my question was answered though. Thank you. It's, so we're actually moving it twice. So in that particular instance, it's not as clean as.
Well, we're moving it from the fund, the roads go straight into the roads fund, and then the roads fund pays.
The general fund.
The general fund and the general fund.
Out of the general fund. We're paying the salaries out of the.
Well, we'd be paying them out anyway. It's the same workplace.
I get it, I get it.
Yeah.
But this just makes it easier. And as we, as these numbers drop off from the left in the years coming, we'll be able to get it to where it's a more streamlined budget. And we've talked about other ways, just to make it more user friendly so that people can understand it. So we're not going to be able to do that all at once because also one of the earlier line items was software maintenance. In order to change all of these even little things that we have to do, we have Deana Lang in there, who she's the main one who understands and Anne to some extent, but she's the one that's going to have to build that Tyler backbone to be able to do all of the reports and to do all of this reporting and to do it. She has to physically go build that in Tyler. And then that's going to take them helping us with their program to be able to help us get it morphed to what we need, which part of the reason, councilors, that's one of the reasons we said we can't do all this TLT changeover until January because we just don't have the capacity to collect it now. And part of that is just, it's easy to move this around in this Excel spreadsheet, but then when we have to translate this actually to Tyler and actually go make it happen, phew, you know, that's, that's skill. Right. And that's.
Do you want to tell everyone what Tyler is in case some people don't know?
So Tyler Enterprises is a software package that actually has its fingers in lots of places. Again, with schools, we used it to do student demographics, attendance, grade book, everything else. So they kind of have a foot in education, but they also have, it's billing software. So when we do our utility bills, when we do our payroll, when we do anything like that, it all runs through this software of Tyler. And so they help build us reports. If you have an issue with your billing, that's where we print our bills. It's where we send them out. It's where we do all of that. All the records are kept in Tyler. And so when we mentioned that, that's what that is. And so it, in order to change these things within Tyler, they don't have something that just perfectly fits and is customized to Port Orford, Oregon. We have to go in and build those things to make it happen. And we are going to need support from them over and above what kind of just comes with the package. You know, if we have a bill that's discrepant and you got to move a something, that's, that's part of what we pay for. But anything above that is specific to us to build those things, we need to pay for. And that's why those, those software funds for the administration are as high as they are in this situation because it is going to be a lift to change all that.
Eventually, we have all of those built and we wouldn't need much.
Until something changes again.
But we're hopefully, hopefully it'll make it easier. It's the goal.
I'm hoping it'll.
I tried to collapse you into.
We've, we're trying.
Five funds. And then Melissa was like, no.
We can't do it all at once. Don't do that.
Because I really did want to do that this year is get your funds down to only five.
And we have thoughts on at least one more to be able to absorb hopefully next year as we wind those down. So to get more things.
Okay, just, I want to point out that we're getting close to the end of our time. So why don't we finish the general fund and then see what we have time for?
Okay. As you can see on page 10, again, transfers in, our money that comes from those other funds, again, like for public work salary or administrative allocation, and then transfers out had been monies that had moved out of the general fund and into these other funds. And you can see historically, funds to public safety, to water enterprise, to streets and to streets capital improvement over the years that have, that have gone with that. And then we've tried to streamline that so we aren't having as many of those transfers. But you'll notice that one of the things with transfer out is even with this balanced budget, we are going to propose to transfer $145,000 this year into public safety to make that fund whole. And then also with streets, because streets particularly, again, don't have a big revenue stream, just like parks doesn't have a big revenue stream. They rely on the general fund for that. And then again, with law enforcement, it's common to have cities pay, you know, out of the general fund for law enforcement. That's not out of the ordinary. But it just is a, it's a, it's a bit of a toll on the, on the general fund. So keep that in mind as we move forward. You'll see that contingency, zero, in order to make all of that happen. And then if we balance this in the general fund, we have 67,000 in the black moving forward, if things go well with that. And then moving forward, one of the whole points of having Anne Heath look through and do this back looking reallocation is to have our general fund be whole and be growing so that we have a place to support the other funds if needed. And that's just the better way to do your budget.
So would that be the sewer and the water had, I can't remember what it was called, where we built up?
Reserves.
Reserves. Would that end up in the general fund now? And it still goes into?
Yeah, they each have their own, because basically these funds are like their own individual little businesses. So water needs to buy the chemicals, pay the guys to make the water, the pumps to do it, the electricity to do it, whatever. And then the water fund needs to be able to charge enough to customers to come out even on that. So that's their own standalone business, basically. So you can't take money from a water fund to go fix something, a lift station or something in the wastewater. Or you can't, that's that inter-district fund that you shouldn't be, you shouldn't do.
I think we missed a lot of the times when we could have used some of that money, right?
Well, SDC, and that's a, that's a tight little window of what you can use that for.
Just make it a little bigger, right? A nine horsepower motor, you may get a 10 horsepower motor and.
Well, we have now that some of the, a bunch of that money is, we're, yeah, we're in the process of figuring some of that out.
Learning forward.
Yeah, no, we're.
What I wanted to suggest too, that I think is part of this strategy moving forward is that we have to go after grants and we have to go after grants for parks. And we have a park grant out. We have a park, a grant out to fix our visitor center. We've got grants out. And having money from the general fund, like the thing that, the strategy that's going to be important is that when you go out for a grant, you need a match. And so instead of going out, instead of us trying to pay for everything out of our budget, go out and get a grant, but we are going to have to have the money for the match. And so some of that is strategic and having the money in the general fund be healthy, that means when an opportunity comes up, we can say, yes, we can put forward the 15,000 for that match or the however much it might be.
You have partners, right?
Yep.
Yes.
With our partners, yep.
So, so I have one question. You mentioned the 67, 556 as the carryover in the general fund on page 10. And then the next year, it looks like it jumps to 477 roughly?
Starting to get healthy.
I, yeah, yeah. So I mean, I appreciate your earlier comments because with all the hard stuff you had to tell us and, you know, educate us on, you also told us that we weren't, we weren't in such a bad place like some of the bigger cities are. I mean, we've got cities all over this state alone that are in huge.
Millions in the hole.
Huge deficits. So I really do appreciate you, Anne. And.
Well, thank you.
This is the part I really like looking at. I like looking at. But I also know from experience that these, these numbers can change.
They can change and you have to be forever vigilant. I just want to point out one thing that clear back in 22, on, in that transfer out thing. And I've said this to you guys before, you guided your general fund in that year. I mean, it's $656,000 that you sent out of your general fund. And, and I know in that year, you did what you had to do. But your general fund has not recovered from that. So now we can start the process of recovering it.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay, so we have.
Good money.
Yeah, well.
Anyway.
Yeah, so we don't, yeah.
Okay.
But so that number, just quickly, that 477, 013, that's dependent upon council approving the recommendations from the finance committee? Is all this dependent upon that?
Well, the whole budget is, I mean, Melissa would have to talk about, but the whole budget is depending on the recommendations. the recommendations put forward, or you can make other recommendations.
Right, right, right. So.
So this was out of the finance committee, the things that we had decided that I showed you in the little blue blocks up there, some of the decisions that we did. That was, by doing those things, we can get to this, that's what creates this. If some of those things aren't palatable, then we have to figure out what is palatable according to what our citizenry needs or wants or whatever to say, what are the decisions we need to make in order to?
So right, that's kind of, we're doing this a little bit backwards.
That's what we're do, well, we're doing it so we understand where we're at. And then we can say, you know, I don't like this piece. I'm not willing to do that. But then maybe this is an example.
So then this carryover will be the only injury that would occur would, would be this carryover number if we, wha- what if council doesn't want to do that? I mean, any of it. Or half of it, or some of it, or, I mean.
Then we have to find other places. Because again, your choices to balance a budget are to increase your revenues or to
Or not shoot.
Decrease your expenses.
Right. Or, or not shoot for half a million dollars carryover the first year. I mean, that's a big chunk of the, of the elephant. I mean, with all due respect.
No, that's, that's just a natural growth. That's, this is just, that, that's not a shoot. That's saying we're starting with the carryover, but then the next year, the general fund is starting to recover. And remember, you're starting to collect your administration from the other funds. And so the general fund is, is getting healthier.
So that's not an increase in revenue?
No, that's an increase in transfers in for administrative services.
It basically makes the general fund into more of like a bank account for the whole city. Or it's like, it's the fund from which.
So I, I'm just concerned that we're going to try and get half a million dollars out of.
No.
No, 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 no.
So on the first part too, as a general rule of thumb, you'd like to have ending fund balance and contingencies. Be able to move forward, be, you know, fifteen percent of your overall.
Right, and I, arguing the, the idea of it, I'm arguing the practical piece of it, is we have people on social security with fixed incomes and, and that's who we're going to be banging for this money. So
Right.
Keep that in mind.
Or we, yeah, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so it's now six fifty-eight or something, and I believe the meeting needs to end at seven because we have a two-hour meeting for this. Um, so I think what we're going to, we've gotten through the general fund. Um, thank you all so much for helping us to understand that. I think what we're going to need to do is plan to reconvene next Thursday at five to go through the other funds. It will probably take us a third meeting, I'm guessing. It's hard to know if it'll be a second, we'll be able to do it all in the second meeting, because I think what we have to do basically is get through understanding these things. And then there are, there might have to be these hard decisions about what are we going to do or not. And we have to make sure we have time both to understand this, absorb it, and then be able to discuss the options. So I think next Thursday at five, did we have a tentative third meeting scheduled if we needed to?
Yeah.
Do you remember when that was?
My calendar. It's the next Thursday. Um.
The kind of.
So June, I think it was June fifth.
Yes, okay.
Eventually.
Yeah. And then we also need to notice that.
Okay.
We are, we're finishing the resources, right?
Let's talk afterwards.
Okay, right, I just.
Yeah, so if there are, so we've gotten through the first part. We can get to move to the next ones as we go. And then we come back to the general fund since that's the one that can slide back and forth. So um, feel free to take this packet with you to look at it and try to digest it a little bit more before we go and bring questions. Feel free to call me if you have some individually. If you have some questions or something like that, if I can help in any way, please let me know. And I'll call Ann and she'll have the answer.
One of the things that I always did is if you have a, um, if you have a budget committee person call you or email you with a question, I kept track of them. And then I, I did a written answer to the question and then made sure the budget committee got it.
That's a great idea.
So that everybody gets the same information.
And that, just to be clear, that, and that's not like a serial meeting or something that's like that?
No, it's just to basically, when you come to your next meeting, you say, um, budget committee so-and-so contacted me. She had this question. This was my answer. So that everybody hears the same questions and the same answers.
That's super helpful. Okay. And this is, um, for those of you who are not people who have a lot of budget experience, I know this can be super overwhelming and it somehow in the end, it all makes sense, is all I can say. Uh, we hope it will. So um, thank you everyone for your attention and participation. And we will see you all again next Thursday and continue our education and discussion. So with that, this meeting is concluded at seven o'clock.